Mayor Denner, the public has been admitted.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I call this meeting to order of the special meeting to order of the City Council of the City of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blighut, please call the roll. Maybe Clerk Blighut's not there.
She's here. Jane, can you hear us? All right, I'll call the roll then. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Robson.
Here.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember McConnell.
Here.
Councilmember Fluid. I know she's on, but it looks like we'll have to get back to her. And Mayor Denner.
Here. So we're going to count Councilmember Fluid is here. Soon as we figure out the technical thing, she might have been on mute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is a special meeting of our City Council, but before we get into it, I first want to publicly congratulate our City Manager and his wife Claire on welcoming their new daughter Kinsley to their family on Monday this week, Monday, August 2nd. So that's a great event, and we've all had a chance to individually congratulate them, and I wanted to make sure that the community had a chance to congratulate them as well. It's a big event to welcome your first child to the family, so congratulations. This meeting is indeed a special meeting. It is focused on the storm events of June and July and what we learned from them, the impact that it's had on the city, and the action plans that the administration is proposing to get sense of council and in some cases approval of council to continue to pursue. So that is the focus of our meeting. It's a special meeting with just that focus. And the first item of business is the financial update, June 25th, 26th storm, meaning that what impact did it have on the city finances and what are our thoughts on that? And I'll turn that over to the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So the first item tonight is a financial update from the June 25th, 26th storm event. Clerk Blighut and Finance Director prepared a summary that shows an outline of the expenses that were incurred during the storm event. You know, the city, due to this event, hired additional contractors for the removal of rubbish throughout the city for a two-week period. Included are the losses the city incurred for property that was damaged from the flooding, including in the public safety basement, some of the 911 equipment, as well the overtime hours worked by the Public Works Department. To date, right now, we're looking at the city has, the impact was about 759,000. You'll see in your packet, we broke it down with the wages and hours for our DPW employees, as well as those contractors that we, you know, worked with here in the city. And so this is just more of an informational, just to show council and in public how much we have incurred from this storm tonight, I mean, from the storm event. And so that's what this is. Otherwise, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take it from council.
Yeah, I think you were going to also comment on your thoughts about covering these expenses going forward.
Yes, thank you. So as part of, you know, the FEMA designation, the city feels very strongly that we're going to be able to actually be reimbursed for a majority, if not all of these expenses here. We feel very comfortable to date that we do not have to have any budget amendment at this time. However, if there is a budget amendment that is needed, we will bring this to council for your consideration.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. The, this financial impact only covers the June 25th, 26th storm event, is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Reed.
Is there additional, are we compiling additional expenses, financial impact for the July 16th storm event?
I do believe there are some expenses, however, there is still some outlying invoices that we're waiting upon from that June 25th, 26th storm event. So this will be, there will be more coming soon.
There'll be more for the June, but the July is separate and is not part of the FEMA designation, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so we may have a budget amendment related to July 16th at some point?
We could, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Rayland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thanks again to Nick and DPW and Public Service and Public Safety. I, two questions. There's a vendor name that says Landscape Services, is that the actual name of the vendor? Okay. And then on the description, we have trash cleanup, flood cleanup, and storm cleanup. Are those basically the same, just different titles, or is there different designations for what, what those entailed?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
On the description, we have Backer did trash cleanup, Denman did flood cleanup, and Landscape Services did storm cleanup, and there's multiple line items for each one. I'm just wondering if those entail the same kind of work, or is it different work that they all did?
Oh, yeah, that's the same amount of work. So they might have invoiced us, you know, per the day, per the week. It was just depending upon when those invoices came in. And so this is just the description that was put in by our staff.
Okay.
Because we had to send some of this information as well over to Wayne County, you know, as we're going through, what were the costs incurred from that storm?
Yeah, and good luck getting all the reimbursements. That's much appreciated. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Councilmember McConnell.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, and Councilmember Fluid has actually had her hand up, so if she wants to go first.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I'm going to have to do something so that I can see your hand.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Darcy. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I did let you guys know. The public doesn't know. I'm in the car, so I'm calling in, and I apologize, it's going to be a little bit tricky for me tonight, but you are able to hear me, which was, it's an improvement from the first time I called in. And I will try and raise my hand, and hopefully you guys will pick up on that, so I don't have to interrupt everybody. I had a question similar to Councilmember Rayland, which is Landscape Services and Santoro. When we have a notation, you know, storm debris cleanup, basically, and it's itemized for each day, I'm really curious how they handled this billing and exactly what they're charging us for when we're looking at, I think the highest charge on there is $57,000 for storm cleanup on July 10th. That's a lot of money for one day. So what types of services were being performed here?
Yeah, so I can answer not only with Landscape Services, but a couple of these others. So it all depended upon the amount of cost for the laborers. Obviously, each one has a different amount, you know, for what their wages and fringes are as well. It could be the equipment that was used. I know, for example, Landscape Services in Santoro, they were using some heavier equipment, front loaders, semi trucks, some with arms. And so those costs, it could have been to the amount of vehicles they had within the park. I know at one point, we actually had up to 20 semi trucks in Gross Point Park. I couldn't tell you if that was all from Landscape Services, but there, that's, that's why you see that cost broken down like that. If I, if I had the invoices, I'd be able to look at it further, but that would be, you know, my guess with that.
You know, the other thing, in reply to that, Councilmember Fluid, is that the one really big charge relates to the transfer station charges, which is the tonnage that each of these vendors delivered. I think it comes under GFL, because our transfer station contract was for GFL, but that number is 51,000 plus and would represent, I think, the tonnage associated with all of these people getting rid of their, of the trash that they collected.
It actually looks like GFL is a little under $1,700. It's the Landscape Services that one day, on July 10th, that is the largest amount. And there, I mean, there are several other days that are in the 30,000. No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm looking at the wrong line. GFL is also 51,000. But, yeah, the Landscape Services are extremely high charges per day, and Santoro is the same thing. It's several days at $30,000 or more per day, so.
One of the, I can, I can answer, I was going to say, I can answer, part of that is that it has something to do with how many crews and how much equipment they brought to the city. So some of these vendors had more crews that they could provide and more equipment, so therefore it was more expensive per day because of what they were doing. And others were more limited in what they could provide. So you would see something that's more equivalent to like one crew and a couple of trucks. I think that there's some variation because of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other, Nick, did you have anything to add to that before I cut you off here?
No, you were correct, Mayor Denner. Depending upon the amount of crews, I know Landscape Services and Santoro were probably, were our two biggest contractors that were able to be within the city during the weekdays and weekends, is where we were only able to get extra vehicles for Green for Life on the weekends for extra trash pickup. Finance Director Blighut, are you on the line now?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Hello?
Do you have a comment to discuss?
You know what, I, yes, I just wanted to say that I believe FEMA is going to cover all of these charges since Wayne County was determined to be a federal emergency disaster. So it just to, going forward for the budget we're currently in, I'm still receiving receivables and payables. However, that, if you recall, we got the 570,000 for the grant money, and those expenditures were spent in the prior fiscal year. We weren't counting on those monies, so that money is an extra in the budget for June of '21, as well as we had $140,000 budgeted for unemployment. And I paid $6,900 in October of '20 for the calendar year. I, wait, what year are we in? October of '20 for calendar year '19. So I'm not going to get a bill for 20, for the COVID year of all the unemployment expenses until October of '21. So I budgeted 140 last year. We only spent 6,900 of that money. So again, the money that is budgeted for July 1 of the current year that we're currently in is 140. So we have those additional funds on top of the theater and the expenditures for concessions and totaled about 150,000 that we didn't spend. So for the current year, for June of '21, I think we're going to be in really good shape. Hopefully FEMA will cover all of those expenses. And then the shortfall that we have for July going through June 30 of '22, the shortfall of 70, 70 will hopefully be absorbed by all the monies that we're going to be adding to fund balance in June of '21. I don't have all my payables or my, all my receivables yet, but it's looking really good. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's.
And I apologize for not being able to go in. I just was having tactical difficulty. Sorry about that.
No problem. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember McConnell?
So I appreciate the information in terms of the impacts as for that, so thank you for sharing that. I also appreciate that we're going to get some support from FEMA as well as Clerk Blighut's comments. So it still would be nice to get just the, what she just referenced, you know, in a written document to us. And then if we could just come back to this at our next council meeting to make sure that we don't have to make any adjustments to the budget. So, thank you.
I planned on having some kind of written report, because I'll have hopefully most of my payables and receivables in the system by then, so I'll have a better understanding exactly where we're at.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think if that's it, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, known as IPaaS, and I'll turn that over to the administration as well.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So I'm actually, I'm going to introduce Chief Gerald here, who will be able to speak further, as the public safety team has been working on this alert system. And Chief Gerald, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the residents of Gross Point Park. You know, our Public Safety Department, we're always looking for ways to improve, and certainly we take certain events, and then we try to look at them and see if we can do things better. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the things that we want to be able to do is warn people and get emergency alerts on a more timely basis, if you will. So in the next communicator that's coming out, we have some information in there. We want to do, we want people to sign up for NICSOL. We also have a reverse 911 system that people can also sign up for. But the problem with those two platforms is that you have to go in and register for those. Now, the reverse 911 is good for people who are at risk or have special needs during an event, because they can actually put all that information in there. So, but again, you'd have to go in and sign up for these things. So the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, or IPaaS for short, is something that you do not have to sign up for. It's an alerting authority, which would be us, is a jurisdiction with the designated ability to alert and warn the public when there is an impending natural or man-made disaster, threat, dangerous person, or missing person. The roles and responsibilities of an alerting authority differ among agencies. The alert originator is the individual sitting at a keyboard composing and issuing the alert. The alert originator utilizes IPaaS in accordance with approved plans, policies, and procedures to create and send out emergency messages. We will be training all of our dispatchers and supervisors to be alert originators. So a little bit of history, FEMA created IPaaS in 2006, and today there are more than 1,500 federal, state, local, tribal, and territorial alerting authorities using IPaaS. Using IPaaS allows alerting authorities to deliver alerts simultaneously through multiple communication pathways to reach as many people as possible. IPaaS does not replace existing alerting methods, so I go back to the reverse 911 as well as the NICSOL. There's no cost to send messages, however, there may be a cost to acquire compatible software that meets their requirements, which we are looking into. IPaaS and its associated delivery pathways is a valuable tool that allows alerting authorities to serve their jurisdictions during an emergency. Deciding whether to issue a public alert or warning is usually up to the local authority. So far, we have one person who has completed the necessary online training, and today I signed the letter of agreement with, or a memorandum of agreement with FEMA. It now will go to the State of Michigan Reviewer Point of Contact so we can get state approval. I will keep you up to date as we continue to go forward with this alerting system. Is there any questions that I might ask or answer for you?
Councilmember Robson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for moving forward on this. Deeply appreciate it. Just one question, Bob. There are still senior citizens that don't have an iPhone or iTechnology. They be precluded from the system, or will it work on a landline, by example?
I do not believe it works on a landline. It works off of cell towers.
Okay, so.
So hopefully they'll get the communicator, and they will sign up for either NICSOL or the reverse 911. I would really encourage our seniors to do that, because they may be the ones who have special needs during an emergency.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Yeah, this is, this is a good program. This is something we've talked, that I didn't realize that this existed until Director Gerald brought it to our attention. But it's always been a concern that if people hadn't opted in to our existing communication systems, Constant Contact or NICSOL, that we might miss them with important information. So this will widen the net quite a bit, and I think will help our ability to, to keep citizens alerted to, to issues. So I think it'll be a great thing for the city. Thank you.
If there's no other questions about that, Mr. Seisland has asked that I update you on a meeting that I attended on Monday with Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence and the District Five Superintendent from FEMA out of Chicago. And so just a couple of things I wanted to cover that we, we talked about in that meeting. First of all, all of the stuff that's having to do with FEMA and reimbursements and so forth has to do with the storm event of June 25th and 26th. If anybody had basement water after any of the subsequent storms, those events have not been approved by FEMA for any type of assistance. So this only refers to June 25th and 26th. So FEMA and the State of Michigan has opened a disaster recovery center at the Go Lightly Career and Technical Center located at 900 Dickerson Avenue in Detroit. For detailed information, I ask you to go to our website, and there will be a document entitled Disaster Recovery Center Opens in Jefferson-Chalmers. Read that for more particular information on that. For residents who suffered a loss from the June 25th and six storms, registered for federal assistance, and have received a denial letter, it's really important that you understand your rights. Again, going to the website where we have these documents, there's one entitled Understanding Your FEMA Letter and Appeal Options. So a denial of a request for assistance can occur for many reasons. It's really important that everybody read your letter thoroughly, as the denial may be something that can be easily remedied. They talked about, one of the things that's on the, the form when you apply for assistance, it asks if you have insurance, and everybody says, well, yeah, of course I have homeowners insurance, but that's not what they're talking about. It's usually what they're looking for on something like that is flood insurance. We all know this wasn't a flood. It was a storm event. And so if you checked, yes, they have insurance, then it's an automatic denial. So there is a way to go about the appeal. We have that drawn out in the documents that are on the website. So again, I just implore you, please read your denial letters very carefully, because they're easily remedied in a lot of cases. At the Disaster Recovery Center, the State of Michigan is supposed to have a multi-agency resource center, or MERC. The mark can guide you through the process of applying for a one-time payment of $1,500. Now, this is what we were told at this meeting, and I had a couple of residents reach out to me and say that they went to the Go Lightly Center, and the people there knew nothing about what I was talking about. So I reached out again, and so the, Mr. Pete Dame from the City of Gross Point was there at the meeting, and he sent me this thing today, and I appreciate him sending me that. It's the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services provides state emergency relief to low-income residents who need home repairs because of flooding. Now, in the title of that, this document is also, I hope, been put onto our website. I sent this to Courtney today to have her upload it with a little message on it. And so right in the title, though, it talks about low income. And I know we have certain residents in our community that are low income, so they would be eligible for this. So there are income thresholds that have to be met. But if they do meet those, then they can also get this one-time $1,500 payment to help offset some of their costs, maybe for a hot water heater, washer and dryer, whatever else may have been damaged. And then finally, at the recovery center, individuals can also apply for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, and that's for food assistance. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have. No questions? I did pretty good.
You did. There was, you talked specifically about the center, the Go Lightly Center on Dickerson, and there may be some confusion. There is a center of sorts that's set up in Gross Point City at their Public Safety Building. And my understanding is that that is not a DRC or Disaster Recovery Center, but is just a collection point for documents. If you are, if you are submitting documents, that's an optional place to submit. Perhaps you could clarify that.
Yeah, we have to love the federal government. We have DRCs, we have DDOs, we have FEMA, we have all kinds of things. So in Gross Point City, at the Gross Point Public Safety Building, they have a DDO, which is a document drop-off center. So if you have your documents that you've filled out, you can take them there. This is a good example, and thank you for bringing it up, Eric. So if somebody gets a denial letter, and they're not quite sure what's going on or why they got denied, they can go to the document drop-off center, and they can get help, they can get assistance in answering their questions there. So FEMA is there helping them do that. Does a disaster recovery center covers far more, that you can get the forms there, you can apply for the assistance, you can do all those other kinds of things.
Thank you. Mayor Bertam Robson?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple quick questions. What are the hours at Go Lightly? And what I understand, or what you might be saying, there is FEMA staff there to assist people with their questions. Would that be correct?
Yes, so they are open, I believe it's seven to seven, seven days a week. Yep, seven to seven, Monday through Sunday. Why they didn't say seven days a week, I don't know, maybe it sounds better, Monday through Sunday.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Councilmember Fluid's got her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting to look over on the slide where I can see that. Councilmember Fluid.
That's okay. I'll just, I'll just jump in if I have to, thanks.
Okay, I'll try.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that update. There was just one thing I wanted to add, and I don't remember which meeting I was in where I heard this, but FEMA indicated that, you know, it's not at all unusual to have to appeal, and they encourage residents to appeal if their claims are initially denied. And they said, you know, you can appeal up to three times before a final determination is made. So they didn't say this, it almost sounded like you can expect a denial going in. But, you know, please understand, you have the ability to appeal, and you should appeal.
FEMA is almost acting like an insurance company.
Yeah, there's, there's one other aspect that's related to this, that your comment, Councilmember Fluid, maybe, made me recall. And that's that if you are denied by FEMA, you do have an opportunity to get a low-interest loan through the Small Business Association. So the SBA, sounds like it's just for business, but in this situation, they are, they work closely with FEMA and can provide low-interest loans to people who have been denied for direct reimbursement. And what you can get a loan for is actually quite broad, and more broad than, than what FEMA will directly reimburse. So that's something else that's in the documents, it says it in the documents, but that's also something that's important to emphasize, I think. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Director Gerald, thanks a lot. That was a great report on both fronts.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the city sewer program. And for that, council and the packet had a couple of memorands from OHM Advisors, our city engineer. And I'm going to turn it over to the administration and I think the engineers to discuss these items.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Denner. So yes, as part of our approach to working since the storm events, we've been working with OHM Advisors, who is our city engineer, to come up with a city sewer program that we would like to implement, you know, right away and starting in, and also continuing in the months and years ahead. So he's got quite a presentation for you. I'm going to turn it right over to Patrick Droes, who's going to share a PowerPoint slide that is going to kind of briefly go over the two memos that were in your council packets. Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Manager Seisland. Appreciate the introduction. Just to, I guess, knit some of this together, there are a few memos in the council packet, as was mentioned, and those are meant to supplement the presentation that we're going to go through here tonight. And we'll share this for everyone, put a version on the website. But basically, what our, our goal tonight is for council is provide an update, really on a recommended approach that we have worked on with staff, to really tackle the various issues that we're finding we're going to need to address with the sanitary sewer system. And we're going to offer those in steps and kind of align them with several goals that we're going to try to attain over, it's basically, it could be a multi-year program. It has some components that are fairly aggressive, and others that are going to take more study to work through. We're going to obviously look for your feedback, any sort of comments or questions you have, whether during or after, we'll have plenty of time to talk about that. And at the end of the presentation, we will have a overview of how this would come together from a scheduling perspective, as well as a reporting element that'll help us to really kind of, kind of track how, how the, how the work is progressing as we go. how the work is progressing as we go. And just to confirm, everyone can see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So really, there are three goals that, as we look to the next steps to improve the sewer system, that we're going to try to attain. And there's a number of ways that we can go about doing this. But the first goal is essentially just drying out the system. And that is done through what we call removal of inflow and infiltration. And I'll get into these in a little later slides in greater detail to kind of connect the dots about what that necessarily means. The third or second goal is modeling the system with the intent of finding ways to optimize it. So we know that sewer has a lot of storage capacity in it. But the question is whether that's being used effectively. And we'll do that through modeling exercises where we can effectively route storms through the system to see how it behaves. Ultimately, these lead to the goal of creating relief points for the system to provide relief during extreme events. We've had conversations with the Michigan Department of Energy, Great Lakes and Environment, which is the entity that oversees wastewater systems in the state of Michigan. We've made the case that the storms that we've had, these issues are extreme events. They are well beyond the design thresholds that were held to. And with these events occurring with greater intensity, greater frequency, we need to find ways to relieve that. And there's been a constructive conversation on that. But we hope to move that towards implementation. In this presentation and plan, we'll kind of show you how we will go about doing that. So to do that, those three goals, we have to attack it from many different ways. And so what we've laid out here is basically five buckets of how that would occur. The first one is asset management, and certainly we've seen asset management in many forms recently. We saw it on the drinking water asset management plan that was presented in July. We see it on the road system when we use what we call Pacer, which is basically assigning a grade to any segment of street in the city that lets us know the condition of a road at any given time and to start planning for whatever investment we need to do to keep that level of service acceptable across the street system. That's what we call a condition assessment. That feeds into the asset management plan, which basically sets forth capital investment that's necessary to maintain assets of a certain condition. The next bucket that I'll identify is what we call inflow removal. This is a more targeted approach. This is where we find instances where there are defects or incorrectly connected portions of the system and that we have a plan in place to identify those and get those removed as quickly as possible and to follow up on them as well, if there's instances where they're not getting taken care of to have a program in place to do that. That's bolstered by things like an ordinance update, which we'll have an item on later in the agenda. We also know that inflow and infiltration can occur on the sewer system. So manholes, sewers, it is aging infrastructure. As infrastructure ages, defects occur, you know, whether those are cracks or loose bricks or even roots growing into the sewer lines, those all contribute to wet weather impacts on the sewer system. So having plan in place to do targeted removal when it's identified is important, too. We talked a little bit about optimization, but that is really kind of the, I'll call it the engineering of it. Figuring out how the system works in detail, routing these storm events through, calibrating it to re-existing conditions using what we call flow metering, where we actually put meters within the system to basically verify the model. That's important, and we'll say it so a little later. That is going to be the key to getting anything permitted through Eagle. The fourth bucket is resiliency, we talked about. Really planning for those extreme events and looking for ways to do that, whether it's storage or additional pumping or partnerships. The fifth one is an important one as well, and that's the public engagement. Doing tonight is providing our approach about how we would, as a city, approach this. But we need the public's feedback through this process. Level of service is going to be a big deal and having a conversation about what the expectations are and then giving an idea of what that looks like in terms of potential projects. And revenue requirements will be important conversation just to square up everything about what it's going to take to do it and that people are aware that there could be some potential cost to that. Or we may be able to find a situation where there's things that can be less expensive and still provide an acceptable level of service. That's something we'll find out through the process. So looking at drying out the sewer system, we thought it would be worthwhile exercise to give a little overview of the system in general and what we do know. We talked about sanitary sewage. Just a real quick overview, there's really three components of that. So the first component is what you'd expect, any contribution from fixtures in your homes, toilets, laundry, what you expect, anything that's supposed to be going there when you flush it down the drain. That is, of course, part of the design. The other component is what we call dry weather inflow and infiltration. If you notice on this particular graph here, it's not on the x-axis. There is a slight distance between the two. That is essentially what we call base flow, which is a result of groundwater. And that particular occurrence is pretty common. Now, how high that is off the x-axis has a basically relation to how wet the ground is. In communities like Gross Point Park or adjacent Lake St. Clair, that can be a little higher than others. In drier areas, it might be lower. So that's basically kind of that base flow. And then the third component is rain-dependent inflow and infiltration, and that is really the spike here. And that, of course, drives the total flow in the sewer up when we do have those rainy events. So the goal is to try to get that R D I I and the dry weather inflow as low as possible because that does make capacity available if there is an extreme event. An overview about where I N I comes from. This graphic shows that it can really come from many different areas. So both within the right of way and also on private property. We talked about infrastructure as pipes age, they form cracks, they can be hard, basically have roots grow in them, which basically can bring water in or out of the system. Manholes have cracks and potentially these covers can sometimes have holes in them. You know, from doing inspections in rear yard areas, a lot of times in separated areas, there may be a manhole cover that has a solid cover on it, but somebody figured out that they can put a rock under it and it's a great way to drain their backyard. Well, the problem with that is that that water then gets into the sewer system. So we want to try to present, prevent those types of conditions. And if we do find them, potentially prepare solutions to deal with that. On the property owner's side, we talked about downspout connections. These directly connect in and feed the sewer system. There's also foundation drains, cleanouts, other defects, again, on the residential side that can contribute. And that's all part of an aging system. It's just a matter of identifying that problem. If it's a significant problem, finding ways to deal with it. And again, the definition of significant comes down to how does that affect the sewer system overall? So why should we focus on I N I? I'll start at the bottom. This is really the main reason because it's really going to be a requirement for anything we do with the state of Michigan. They made clear to us that we have to work to dry out the system parallel to efforts for resiliency. So if we know of conditions where there are connected impervious areas, whether those are parking lots or homes, we have to show progress to the state that we're working to identify and come up with ways to get those off the system because those are significant contributors to wet weather conditions. The other three reasons get to more of the reason of how that affects the city. Obviously, these are significant contributors to basin backups. If there is large amounts of inflow gaining the system that has the impact of getting water in quickly, the dry weather flow is much slower. The groundwater, it takes a lot longer to get in the system, but these inflow points, it really gets right in right away. So intense rain events have an effect to really surcharge the system quickly. The other components of this inflow is that it costs more to work because it has higher pump usage. And of course, it also, the way that the city is billed for sewer use, it's by a meter. So if we have higher flow into GLWA, we do end up getting a higher bill. So there's incentives on the billing side to also dry out the system. So benchmarking, how do we compare to other communities? And so what we did here is we used some data from the Great Lakes Water Authority to kind of give some context. So this is the service area for the Great Lakes Water Authority. Gross Point Park is over here. And we have the wastewater treatment plant down here. Everything basically flows down here to this point. Everything from this point south is a different treatment plant. This is the particular area we're talking about. So you can see, based on this graph, the vast majority of the system is a separated area. But there are several communities that are still combined. Southeast Oakland, many of those communities, Birmingham, Royal Oak, Madison Heights, Oak Park, several communities in that area are still combined as well as many east side communities, including some of the areas of Gross Point. Gross Point Park, as we know, is separated, as you can see here. So we should compare ourselves to other separated communities. A couple in this view, we have Center Line up here. And then there's also the city of Farmington, right over in this area here, that are also separated. So let's compare. This is a comparison using a, basically what we took is the average daily use and divided by population. So as a comparison, Gross Point Farms is a combined community or partially combined. And it's approximately three hundred fifty gallons per person per day. And just for a context, modeling usually has us look at about a hundred gallons per capita per day. So that's generally kind of the industry standard. In southeast Michigan, it's actually a little less than that. But just for comparison purposes, you can assume that everyone uses maybe about a hundred gallons on average. But looking at a separated community like Center Line or Farmington, you can see that it's a little above a hundred. Gross Point Park, though, is up over two hundred. So what that says to us is that although we are separated, it is a wet community that has some certainly leaky infrastructure still that could use some attention. Looking at trends, this particular graph here shows us the flow data for the city of Gross Point Park spaced out over a seven-year period. And so what happens every year is that the Great Lakes Water Authority will do metering for the community and it will basically report back on what those particular metrics are for the year. Now, what we'll say on this is that there are drier years than others. On average, we get around thirty-four inches of rain per year. There's years where that's been as low as twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and there's years that it's been more than that. The other thing to note, and I'll go to the next slide, is that there are also impacts from the groundwater, which you mentioned in Gross Point Park. When the lake levels are higher, it has a potential for basically increasing that impact. And so we kind of saw that in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. So that has likely skewed the data up a little bit. But it still does show that there are areas that are susceptible to that. So that's something as a data point, we want to look at and say potentially areas that might be within the influence of Lake St. Clair or Fox Creek are ones that we want to look at potentially for focusing because perhaps those are contributing in higher groundwater conditions to the system negatively. So we're not alone in this effort. Obviously, within the city of Gross Point Park, we have plenty of ideas about how to deal with this. We talked about policies and doing projects that reduce the amount of wet weather impacts, whether that's sewer lining or doing ordinance changes or ultimately controlling our destiny with maybe looking at additional outfalls. But there's also the opportunity to work with partners in the area like GLWA and some of the adjacent communities. There could be situations where it might make sense for communities to work together that can create a larger project that has a very significant effect. So these are things that is part of conversations over the next few years or even sooner. These ideas will be sussed out and potentially advanced depending on viability of them. And we also mentioned, of course, that property owners and residents can certainly do things as well to help out with finding ways to disconnect impervious surfaces and then considering if it makes sense for them, potentially looking at protective measures and basements. And those are some things that we can look at at a more city-wide scale about whether those might make sense in certain areas and others maybe not as much. So what can the city do right now to remove this inflow and infiltration from the system? And this gets to our immediate action plan. So since the event, the community administration has been really following up on some of these existing known connections to make sure that these are a priority for property owners to get these disconnected. So reminding people that if a parking lot is connected, that it really needs to be taken off the system. The city has also been working, I know Tom, Jenny and Pat Thomas are on the call, really performing point-by-point inspections of all the known bulkheads between the storm and sanitary system. When the city system was separated, there were portions of the sanitary system that were converted over to the storm system. So as part of that, there was plugs and bulkheads that were put in place to separate that physically. And that's part of the maintenance is to make sure those are still in place. Although they were done with typically rebar and concrete, there were some very significant forces as part of that June event that could have had effects on that. And so the city's been working to really verify the conditions of all those bulkheads. Now, an immediate action as well is that we know that, again, as we mentioned, the pipes and manholes in the community are in many cases, you know, approaching almost a hundred years in age. And there's a need to get a better handle on the condition of those, especially given the recent storm events. And so one of the ideas that administration and engineering has really got behind is the idea of doing a sewer assessment project to go out and physically inspect sewers and manholes within the community and hopefully identify areas where we can start right away at doing rehabilitation. When we get that data back, the goal is to take that process and identify cost-effective segments where we find an area that has very leaky pipes, has significant root growth, other issues. We want to get out there and get that lined. And there's basically what we call cured-in-place pipes that we will put inside of an existing pipe. And then you cure it with very hot and steam water and that'll basically form a physical liner within the existing sewer line. And these have been proven as a great way to help reduce the inflow into the system, especially if lines are in relatively good condition and just have leaks, the great way to go to help reduce some of that inflow. And as if we do happen to find any issues that are significant that require immediate emergency repair, one of the things that was recommended within Manager Seisland's budgeting ideas was to really have a site aside available so the city can act quickly if there's a need to do any sort of remediation to repair infrastructure that's found in need of immediate repair. More medium-term ideas to be done. Again, if we do find that there's larger areas that need to be identified, we certainly know that there are some alleys in some areas where disconnecting downspouts can be problematic to help advance projects that might be able to tackle these in a more holistic fashion. Ideally, if you can disconnect the downspout and route it to a grass area, that's best practice. But we know there are some areas where lots are tighter and there's just not as much green space. Those are potential areas where we can work together. And so with some of the ideas we've been talking about are looking at some of these alleys and separating them. And then even potentially looking at grant sources, there are a fair number of grants that are open even right now that make available dollars that help reduce coastline pollution. And these are some of the ideas that we think could be packaged up nicely to potentially pursue that funding. And then we also talked about the lining options. That likely can become something that becomes an annual program as sewers are televised, develop a basically a program right after that to go in and do the repairs as necessary. Just so it's kind of a rolling program year to year, much like the paving program goes on a year after year. So goal number two, and I apologize if the first one had a lot more topic to it. This will be a little more straightforward, but I appreciate everyone's patience in getting the rundown of the sewer system as we see it today. So when we talk about modeling and why do we do it? We look at it from the standpoint of optimizing. As I mentioned, the sewer system, when it was converted to a combined sewer, to a sanitary sewer system, we know that it has some very large infrastructure. There's pipes that There's pipes that range in size, get all the way up to 14 or 15 foot in diameter. So very large infrastructure. And relative to the flow that's routed through it, that sanitary component, there's a lot of extra capacity. What we don't know about the system is if there's opportunities to optimize that. And, and what we're talking about doing is, is specifically creating a, a more, I'll call it smarter sewer system. We'll know a little bit more about it, how the flow goes through it. And actually be able to identify in real time where, where water is and, and what levels it is with instrumentation. And so really, how do we do that? We have to really build a model that gives a realistic demonstration of how a system works. And that's going to allow us to really start to play with ideas about things we can do to provide additional capacity. There can be improvements that are very significant, but there can also be small improvements as well. There are, just from our experience on working on large interceptors, sometimes there's spillover points that are, for whatever reason, a very small pipe. And if we make that a larger pipe, all of a sudden it, it totally changes the dynamic about how water is handled within the system. And so having this model in place allows us to run that optimization. And, and really learn a lot more about how we can better use that. So the, the goals to getting there, or the, I guess the approach to getting there is, is really to develop what we call a calibrated hydraulic model, which is going to allow us to look at these options and also ultimately get to the point of permitting construction projects potentially for these extreme events. What we'll really be able to do when, when we get this complete is basically run any scenario through the model and identify where water levels are within, within reason, based on the, the modeling tolerance to understand, you know, what we can do to, to improve under these actual conditions. We can run the various storm events and see what happens. And what we use, we use real data and observations from those events to make sure that the model is appropriately calibrated. So we can have a level of confidence with it. So how do we advance this? Again, some short term, some short term tax share. The, the flow metering plan is probably the first approach for that on the technical side. And so we proposed that a, a bid is put out as part of the sewer assessment contract that does a flow metering program where we basically identify where we want the meters to go, what sizes would be, and put that out to bid and, and bring that back to council. Once we have that complete. We'll then take that and work concurrently with preparing a hydraulic model for the system. Again, to identify trends and identify any areas of concern. And then with that model, we can also then coordinate with GLWA on future instrumentation. We've had some conversations with GLWA about the need to have more data on the system downstream of us. And so with us having a model and us having information on the downstream condition, that can then feed into standing operating procedures when we get to the point of extreme management, to be able to know what is happening downstream and if it's an appropriate time to potentially change some of the pumping patterns within the city. Having all that data in one spot allows the city to manage these events in real time as they happen. On the more medium term, ultimately, we suspect that there will be some potential projects within the city that will help and provide additional capacity. That's going to come out of that modeling. So once those are identified, we'll talk a little bit later about a master plan. But we'll basically design, bid and construct that, those projects as well as they become apparent. And then again, share these findings as we find them. As we learn more about the system, that really work potentially with some partners at GLWA and area communities to see if there's any opportunity for projects that have shared benefits. Because we do know that, of course, there are GLWA sewers that pass through the city that also had an effect during the, the June event with surcharge. So anything we can do to reduce the burden on those systems is also going to benefit Grows Point Park. Our third point is really kind of getting to the point of the, the relief systems for resiliency. So the case for resiliency, over the past 10 years, the data strongly shows that the community is, is able to pass the design events without issue. But when we get to these extreme events, we have problems with the ability to, to basically dewater the system. And so we're reliant on that ability as well as downstream communities, GLWA system. Those, as we know, can be subject to failure. And the goal, I think largely is knowing that the changes with the climate patterns in, in the area and the, the desire to really be able to deal with these by ourselves really drives the need for resiliency. And added to all that, of course, is the community feedback, which strongly supports that. So there's a very strong case of Grows Point Park to explore these ideas, to figure out how we can better manage these extreme events. Relative to boosting resiliency, there becomes kind of three main points. Again, we gotta have an education and outreach component to that. And so things like tonight where we're talking about sewers and, and what level of the service discussion might involve and, and what options are there and which ones are more of a challenge is part of outreach because we need to get feedback from the community about, you know, what their, what their desires are. What's acceptable, what's not. And things like outreach, websites, tools, getting feedback workshops, these are all going to be part of that. It's going to queue up the spot where we can have this level of service discussion. That'll help us identify design options and an understanding of, of with the community about what options are on the table. There are a number of ways to tackle sewer issues. There's, they range in, in all the way from upsizing pipes and new outlets to putting drain disconnections and backwater valves. Having conversations about what those mean and level, level of service and confidence and cost is going to be an important thing. Because ultimately, it's going to get to the point of taking what ideas come out of this and checking them against what rates are available for the sewer fund and additional funding sources to potentially fund these things. So a community engagement task runs over top of all this to make sure that we're collecting that feedback and getting decisions vetted with the community that's going to affect. Really, some of the things we're talking about here are, from an infrastructure perspective, transformative projects that, that really we, we are designing for the next 100 years. So we need to really think through these with a great level of detail and confidence. But we also understand there's a very important aspect, we've got to move quickly as well. So that all comes together and having conversations already started help make sure that goes well. So taking from that dialogue then to construction, what has to happen? Really, if we have these options on the table that come out, and I think what, what we would propose to do is really develop a few options based on best practice that we know of. There's been experiences on all sorts of different ways of handling these type of events. And we know the pros and cons, but to kind of present those to the community and then show relative to the sewer model, how effective or not effective those are compared to cost is it makes for a, a productive discussion to really get a full understanding of, of how these projects could come together. Working with manager Seislin, we also talked about the need for a rate study of this, not only the sewer, but also the water side. Back in July, we did a presentation on the water system where we've identified almost $27 million with improvements. The sewer projects will be significant as well. We have to kind of vet those out and really kind of confirm what the most important projects are. And then compare that with the rate to make sure that those are projects could be sustained by the community as well. Ultimately, with the modeling completed and the funding in place, we move forward to permitting and construction of those improvements. With this particular program that we've laid out, it's a multi-year program. And the reality is we're going to find out things as we go through it. And so we found it to be important to really kind of talk at least schematically about what a reporting process might look like. And so we thought an idea to kind of keep, keep this continuous throughout the process. Periodic updates to council. So as projects are advancing, reporting out on what we find. So it's not a situation where we do the work and then, you know, four or five months later, you get an update about, you know, what the findings were. This is an important topic for everybody. And our hope is that through things like this, we're giving some, some background education so people kind of understand the importance of various things that we talk about. But providing these periodic updates about where things are at and, and what is discovered and, you know, positive and, and negative. Just so folks aren't surprised as information comes in. Along those same lines, an annual perspective, we thought it'd be valuable to, to have a dashboard of sorts where we could provide metrics about what we find and what we accomplished during a given year. And then ultimately, that is also aligned with a master plan where as we develop these projects, we can prioritize them and do a capital improvements plan. That allows us not only to basically list off and know what these projects are, but it allows us then to align them with other projects. So if we're going to do water maintenance in an area, we can also do the sanitary at the same time. So there's reduced impact to residents. So it's really, we're just in the neighborhood once. And then it's also potential, potential economies of scale. Because it's a, a larger project that might be more enticing for a single contractor to pursue. This is an idea about what a benchmarking and goals reporting might look like. We just provoke, put these up here as an idea. You know, on, on Roadsoft, for instance, we do what's called Pacer, where we give a score to every particular road segment. We can do the same thing as part of our closed circuit television analysis of the sewer system. And we can really kind of provide a, an averaged out score for the community. And that's something as we get more data, we can really kind of update that to show if we're making progress on the, on the advancement. Another idea potentially is just to track area of impervious, pervious that's disconnected from the sewer system. So if we identify in a given year, you know, a half acre total and we remove that, we want to report that. We may want to actually also establish targets for these as well, so we can see if we're on target or off. And of course, evaluate as, as we go year to year. Another idea is a gallons per year analysis to identify how much we actually remove. So as we do lining or these impervious area disconnections, we can quantify that. Same with gallons per capita. We showed that for Grows Point Park and, you know, if that's a goal that we want to get that down to a certain level. If we have the engineering to back it up where that goal should be, we can do that. And really, the, the goal partly is to kind of track this year to year and show if we're making progress or not. And if we're not, we need to maybe revisit the strategy to maybe identify areas that are more effective. And the last one is just downspouts. So if those are, as those are connected, it's a good thing to report. That'd be a very easy metric to, to report out on, on a, on an annual basis to show really still how many we still have connected and how many are still, or didn't been disconnected. So a potential schedule, and this is really just penciled out based on some of our experience and potential ideas about how long stuff typically takes. The asset inventory work was really completed. Grant was, was obtained through some cog some years back. And that was able, actually a fairly significant step because that allowed the city to digitize this entire asset inventory that previously been on paper maps. So having that all now digitally allows us to port that into a model relatively quickly. So that lets us get started right away. The initial task we mentioned, we're getting the sewer condition assessment work underway, putting bid doc, excuse me, bidding documents together. Hopefully get those out to bid here within the next month or so, so we can actually get work underway to do that evaluation. Same with the sewer flow metering, like to get a bid out for that. What typically has to happen is some meters get put into the system and we want to leave them in place for a long enough period of time so we can actually capture a rain event and see how the system reacts to it. Those meters will give us invaluable data that we can use to calibrate. Parallel to that, we start a model for our sewer system. As that model or that flow meter data becomes available, we can use that to calibrate our model. And that goes right into alternatives analysis and then the level of service funding that we talked about. The work with the community about what our options are, what the funding might look like. And ultimately, that leads to potentially resiliency projects next year. We've reached out to Eagle to see if there's ways that we could advance that. That'll be a, a continuous discussion. But generally speaking, the, the feedback we received is that the, the modeling has to be in place to justify the project before they'd issue a permit to do that. So with that, that's the end of the presentation and I can turn it back to manager Seislin for, for the discussion.
Thank, thank you, Patrick. I appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing and your team over at OHM. I'll turn it over to Mayor Danner and council if they have any questions regarding Patrick's presentation.
Okay, what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll get questions answered and comments from council. First, I want to commend the administration and our, and our engineers, Patrick and your, and your team at OHM for putting together very quickly a comprehensive plan to attack this. Over the, over the years, I know we've chipped away at some of these topics, but not, not in a comprehensive way with the exception of the asset, the asset management process. So this, this, I think is, given our current situation extraordinarily important for us to pursue as a city. With that, I open it up to council's questions and comments. Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor Danner, and thank you, OHM and City Manager Seislin for the presentation. I apologize in advance because I have a lot of questions, so I'll try to be quick.
Commissioner McConnell, can I just interrupt you for a moment? Any residents that join us late, please make sure your video is off until we get to later in the meeting. Any, any residents joining need to have their video off. Thank you. Commissioner McConnell.
Sure. So I was just saying, I apologize, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to try to go quickly. In the materials we received, it says of the 44 miles of sewers, 41 are owned or operated by the city. Do we know who has, I think you mentioned Glee Well, but do we know who owns the other three? And how, how are we working collaboratively to audit and remedy any issues there? Do you want me to just go through the questions or answer each one?
I can, I can answer that one. So yeah, the other three miles, we believe are owned by Great Lakes Water Authority. There are effectively three interceptors that pass through the city. There's Fox Creek Enclosure, the Fox Creek Relief Drain. And then there's a sewer on Bedford that extends from Detroit. Not sure if that one's DWSD or GLWA, that's one of our questions we're going to have. There's also a sewer on MAC as well. It's a GLWA sewer.
And, and, but we are working to audit those and see if any remedies need to be done.
Yeah, and I believe we have a, a meeting next week with GLWA to, to really kind of answer these type of, or ask these type of questions. And, and I don't know if Nick or, or Tom or Pat, if you have any other thoughts on those sewers.
Yeah, and so with, with that said, Councilmember McConnell and as Patrick said, one of the things that, you know, the, the fellow gross points and us and our engineering teams, we've actually been sharing a lot of data between ourselves because, you know, we have some of the same major infrastructure from Great Lakes Water Authority that runs through our communities. And so one of those things, as I know, the Great Lakes Water Authority is establishing their own audit, is we're asking for accountability as well. That, you know, they can, you know, be with a partnership of assisting us in understanding their systems more and how they tie, tie into ours. And so I'm, we're prepared to have a meeting with their chief planning officer next week further to discuss this, some of these. And this is something that we plan to engage, you know, for the many days and months ahead.
Great, thank you. And then the second question is how does the smoke testing differ from the manhole inspections? Has the, has the smoke testing been conducted? And if so, were residents notified?
So I can, I can.
Go ahead, Nick.
So just as a brief background, and then I'll let Patrick jump in on that. So there, there was some smoke testing back done in 2016. And then we're looking to do additional testing as well. Patrick, I'll turn over the rest to you now.
Smoke testing is one of the proven ways to identify connected lines to sanitary systems. The, the manhole inspections. The the manhole inspections. Are beneficial because those will identify more of that groundwater and direct connections. And in some cases, catch basins have what we call traps on them. Like if you have in your home, if you look down in the drain and in in the floor, you'll also see like there's water in there. And basically what that does is it prevents sewer gas, will also prevent smoke from getting through. So these inspections that are done through televising. Can really get into those areas that may not have been identified always as part of smoke testing.
All right, thank you. And. My colleague had asked about an audit of the entire system. And if I read the material correctly, this proposes twenty percent. Why not the entire system? And is this an industry standard?
So to answer that, I think it's a it's a question of budgeting. You know, we suspect there's going to be limited resources. So if we're going to. You know, take the initial funding and try to use it effectively. There will be benefit, I think, in every foot of inspection that's done. Ideally, you do the entire system. But at the same time, it doesn't leave you budget for some of the other activities. I would say that it is you get a fairly good. Picture of what condition is by doing a sample like that. We we do that in many communities where. For instance, there was a grant called the Saw Grant, which was made available by the state of Michigan in two thousand thirteen. And those grants would fund a portion of the sewer system. And typically. If you get somewhere between ten to twenty percent, and as long as you do a random distribution across the city. You capture really kind of a general score. And what that does is it gives you. An idea about what a revenue requirement might be. So you can have that level of service conversation. And not have to go back to that conversation three years later because you you pick up a lot more information. That sample size gives you an idea, I think, about where to set your budget.
So just to follow up on that, for the manholes, it's actually five percent that's recommended, which seems. Really low. Is that industry standard or is that going to be enough?
I think we could increase that, you know, to some extent, we do know a little bit about it from just the smoke testing. You know, the pipes often will have a lot more inflow just because there's more length to them that have the ability and they're deeper typically. Especially in areas where we suspect there might be high groundwater. Relative to the 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 project, the manhole inspections are less expensive than the pipe. So that could be something. That we could we could set a budget. And then one of the things we can do is as we get into it, if we're finding that. It's a bigger problem than we thought. That's an idea where you could potentially have some contingency in the in the bid to increase that as necessary.
And then for the sanitary sewer flow metering, it says fault. I mean, it's pretty ambitious. Is that realistic, including, you know, with the competitive bidding to start that quickly?
So. So we've done these bid packages. The nice thing about the flow metering is that it's typically. You just have to identify where you want the meters to go. And you put together specifications about basically performance. One of the things that you'll see at later meetings is we'll typically bid it out from a a purchase or a lease option. And it it's good to kind of get that comparison because there comes a point in time where it just makes sense to buy them. And it could be something that becomes valuable to the city to have those in place. Just because as part of a continuous reporting. It it's good to have that. That said, the actual. Preparation those bidding documents is not a significant lift. So I think we could have documents ready for bid. You know, relatively quickly that meet that schedule.
We've heard from residents about like some specific problem areas. Will they be accounted for in this review? For example, like Thousand Block of Lake Point, we we hear about different areas that they feel like they're repeated problems. Are they going to be accounted for?
Yes. So in in the memo, we spelled spelled out that areas that are problematic will will be definitely will identify those. And we'll kind of use the the leftover budget to kind of get the more general area. Because ideally, you know, if there are problems, we want to find those. And if they need repairs, get that going right away.
Okay, and I got two more questions and I'll try and wrap up. The well, maybe three. I didn't see our pumping stations. Are there any improvements needed there, including additional training for our operators or anything in terms of short term fixes that we can do?
I I can defer to to Pat on that. I believe the the pumping stations are. The the pumps were all upgraded as well as electronics recently. Pat, any further thoughts on that?
Yeah, as far as the pump stations, I know the updated three of the pumps within the last probably ten years in the sanitary station. And in the storm station, there are a lot of work that was done on those. As far as maintenance issues, electrical issues and such. So a lot of that's been done already. So really, those things are pretty much up to snuff. As far as pumps go and the stations, of course.
And the training.
Training and such is done through Mike Kraus, who's the supervisor. In the department. And they have at least six people on call, you know, to like every every week and they switch off every week. And Mike does do training with them probably every four to five months.
All right. And then I had asked about the rescue fund dollars and whether that could be used to offset any of these. Short term fixes. I also wanted to mention the Ann Arbor program where. And it was a mandate. So I know that it's tricky, but they the city underwrote the cost of installing sump pumps. And valves. So I just wanted to at least reference that for us to consider. You know, as we look to figure out solutions, so.
I guess I I could add on the the Ann Arbor program. If if folks are interested in that program, there's a fairly robust website that the city of Ann Arbor has put together. Which it shows some of the ideas that we would look to do relative to public information. There's a lot of basically provide some guidance about, you know, why you might do a sump pump or how you maintain that. So that that's one of the things. And one of the things about the Ann Arbor program. Is it wasn't necessarily a citywide effort. It was focused in certain areas. And that's one of the things as part of that model. If we find areas where we'd be of benefit. That might be an area where. You know, basically, the data shows it might make sense to do targeted. Some pumps in certain areas. So. Definitely one of those options to consider.
All right. And then the for residents who may not understand why some of these things weren't done before, I don't know if somebody can speak to that.
I guess I guess I'm the longest serving person here. The hindsight's perfect, right? But a lot of things were were pursued and completed. The two thousand sixteen storm event really. Created a lot of focus in this area and a number of things were pursued. Smoke testing was pursued, for example. Downspout downspout disconnection system or program rather was pursued and our initial attempt at the ordinance there was was put in place. There was analysis of known problem areas at the time, but it was not as comprehensive as this. The storm events that we just that we that we. It also, by the way, the. The things that Supervisor Thomas mentioned about the pump stations. Many of those things were initiated as a result of what we learned from the storm event in two thousand sixteen. So. It's always a question of of what you know and what your priorities are and your funding is available. And and a number of things were pursued, but a number of things also needed to be pursued. Going forward is we learned. You know, very clearly in the recent storm events, which gave birth to this to this program.
Just that Nick on the rescue fund dollars, and then I will stop talking.
Yeah. So one of the proposals as part of this is we're we're set to receive approximately about one point one million dollars. As part of this in the American Rescue Plan funding, half of that will come in this fiscal year and the other half will come in the following fiscal year. Talk with the engineers and Finance Director Blake Hut. Our proposal, you know, to help offset some of those costs is that we would use approximately close to, you know, with your consideration. About four hundred thousand of that American Rescue Plan dollars. Leave a hundred fifty thousand for contingency projects and other priorities within the city, including the. Lead service lines and other appropriate areas, you know, that is part of that American Rescue Plan. And then obviously, in the presuming fiscal year, you know, I would I would certainly entertain. That we could use a significant amount of those dollars as well to address the sewer and the water side.
Thank you very much.
If I could add one thing on funding as well. We we talked about FEMA at the beginning of this meeting. We are going to investigate a little further, but. We are aware of other communities that have used FEMA funds to basically. Offset future risk for FEMA. So if we find a project through our evaluation. That shows that, you know, we could significantly reduce risk. For the community and make the case to FEMA. That potentially could be a funding source. So I think I think it's an all hands on deck. Strategy on funding. There's a a pretty easy case to be made about the need for it. So we'll we'll keep pursuing that when those options come available.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to forget this time. I'm going to go to Councilmember Fluid because I did look to see that her hand was raised. A customer fluid.
Thank you. Thanks. Following up on what Councilmember McConnell was asking about, I. Had asked for a full audit of the system. And so I was also concerned to see that you were estimating, you know, a twenty percent review. I understand. Obviously, there are financial constraints. And you also mentioned in the document randomized targeting. My concern with actually I have two concerns with a twenty percent review. One. Is that Mr. Drows indicated that we may have damage to pipes. From the June event that was not there before. And if we've got new problem areas that we did not have before, I would hate for those to be. Overlooked. And the second part of my concern is that. We would wind up with, you know, an area that was not checked, that was not fixed, and that would lead to someone's basement being flooded again when. And by someone, I mean multiple residents, multiple homes being flooded again. So I'm I'm pretty concerned about the idea of randomized targeting and the and the twenty percent sample size. Can you go into any more detail about that? If you really feel that that would be sufficient or if. We just need to find a way to fund that.
Okay, Patrick.
So my.
One thing I'll ask you to emphasize that I think was part of your earlier answer is that there's two components of the twenty percent and you could maybe elaborate on that. As I understood it. What you said was one component of the twenty percent is focused on problem areas that are known and came to light in part because of the recent events. And the remaining part of that twenty percent is the more randomized sampling of the system, but ask you to continue on that.
Sure. So one of the things that that we did. As we received the data for the July event is we we plotted out where. Where the issues were recurring. And there were certain areas where it was more common, but then there was also many areas where it really didn't appear to align with any. You know, you couldn't like identify there was a particular sewer district or or street that was a problem. So those areas where we saw. Density of reports are certainly areas I think we would focus on. Just to make sure that there isn't some issue there that was contributing to that. But the other the other portion would would basically be, you know, again, what that that leftover budget is to the question. It certainly would not be a bad investment to do the entire system. It's just a funding question, really. You know, I think what what communities typically do. Is generally do a a rotating inspection where. You know, we start and then, you know, we come back a few years later to look at that. And what that does is it ultimately gets us to the point where we can start to look at trends within the community. So there there would certainly be value in doing an entire system evaluation. Again, it's just the funds to do it.
Just real quick. Yeah, to Patrick's point as well, you know, as part of this approach and he said as well, you know, it's an issue of funding. You know, being able to do everything that we like. So we're looking at targeted approaches of certain areas that we can do so. However. Our intent is that, you know, we do look to consider, you know, and if we can complete, you know, more of that than twenty percent. We want to do so, you know, whether we could complete more of that in the following fiscal year and others, that is our intent. At this point in time, this approach is something that we can take right now to try and identify. And use some other solutions, you know, spread out those dollars that we have. We're very hopeful too that, you know, we can get some more federal dollars. It's going in the Senate's bill right now. As well as grants and other opportunities with green infrastructure. That's something Patrick and I have been looking at. Specific with like green alleys and other pervy pervious pavement surfaces.
Okay, and that. Yeah, that that brings me to I I do have a couple of other questions and that kind of. Takes me to my next question, which is. You know, obviously, this is going to be, it's going to be a large fix. There are some things that are going to be regional fixes that are going to take probably years to accomplish. But. I know what residents want to hear is, you know, what can we do right now? What can we do immediately? You know, we may have another bad storm in a couple of weeks and. So before we get into that, I know we're going to talk about, you know, downspout disconnection and a little bit here, but. One thing I did specifically want to ask the city manager about was whether he has. Talked to R R S. He had mentioned before that he had been talking to them about some green. Solutions, I think, you know, that is going to be one aspect of this that we're going to have to. Address. Have we started working on that yet? Anything that anything that mitigates runoff. Let me I will I will broaden that before you answer. Because if we're going to talk about, you know. Disconnecting downspouts and then also ensuring that. The sewer separation is complete and then also ensuring that our parking lots are no longer draining stormwater into our sanitary system. How quickly can we get those disconnections done so that we are at least mitigating that flow?
So I can answer a couple of those and then Patrick, I'll let you jump in as well. For a couple of those that we've been able to identify that are connected, we are having meetings with those, you know, homeowners or businesses. That, you know, there is a need that they have to disconnect. Obviously, they're contributing to the system. As well as themselves in regards to these events. So that's something that's taking place right now. You know, especially in regards to, you know, places like, you know, along Kirchville at the schools there, there's a couple of areas in their parking lots that we. Were intending to work with them about. As well as in regards to green infrastructure. This is something that Pat Drose and I have been, you know, looking back and forth and seeing. You know, I I can't think off the top of my head, but one of those is. Wildlife Foundation. There's a couple others there. And then we are actually. Me, the Gross or Gross Point Park, the other Gross Points, City of Detroit. And others are actually partnering together to see about establishing actually a watershed group. Something that we'd be able to have a higher voice, you know, going to the federal, the state. And at the local level to be able to, you know, work together more in this regional solution. But. To back to your question of the actual short term fixes, you know, obviously downspouts are one of those immediates. As well as part of this program that if we're able to identify systems, you know, we've been coining a face, find it, fix it. You know, if we're able to start the CCTV program, our DPW is investigating and finding it, you know, we want to find this problem. We want to fix it right away. So I know that was a lot all in one place. And then Patrick, do you have any more to speak to that?
Yeah, I I think on green infrastructure. There there's. There are some practical limitations to green infrastructure. But to to the larger picture of low impact design. That's something that that, you know, through redevelopment. We looked at at the current ordinances and we we feel that there's some need to add. Requirements that that bring in the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance and then potentially. Modify that based on development within the city. You know, we do all this work to get the sanitary sewer system. In better condition. But we do know, of course, that the stormwater system is under those same design parameters. And so anything we can do on property to reduce. And so anything we can do on property to reduce that impact, it's just going to have an, an impact positively on, on, on the system's ability to manage that. So you know, those are things that we look at when new developments come in. We want to be working with the development community, make sure they have detention in place. If they can do infiltration to reduce the, the impact of that wet weather in, in places where it's appropriate to do that as well. So those are all things that I think is part of that, you know, that public engagement component to get people's opinions on that. You know, one of the things we find with, with rain gardens, for instance, those, those can be a little touchy sometimes. You know, some, some people react differently to the landscaping that happens in, in rain gardens. I might see native plants and, and, you know, deep rooted shrubs that are going to really help to absorb and transpare, but other people see a bunch of weeds. So that's kind of a conversation that's important to have. And then to be looking at projects that we do as, as demonstrations. Manager Seislin and I were talking about, we have funding upcoming for Kirchville. Going to include some potential bump outs and things like that for the Safe routes to school project. Those are potential opportunities where we can work in basically doing tree planter rain gardens to manage the stormwater. Those are demonstration projects for the community to see how those might sit, fit into the community. Really just kind of starts that conversation.
Okay. And, and you know, that's something, Mr. Dros, if you don't know that, I'm the chair of the Sustainability Committee. So I'm, I'm happy to help with those. I know we have a lot of residents that are interested in helping with that as well. But specifically, what I'm asking right now is when can we just, you know, when can we, if we pass this downspout updated ordinance tonight? If we know we have parking lots that are still draining into our sanitary system. These are things that we don't have to work regionally. How soon can we get these things done so that we can start seeing an impact?
So to answer your question, you know, it depends on obviously as well, the amount that we're able to start. Obviously if we were able to, you know, disconnect many downspouts within the community, I believe that would certainly help in some areas that we're seeing more wet weather flow as well as those with those parking lots. You know, these are things that as Patrick is, you know, doing the modeling, he'll be able to show to further, you know, how much this has improved our system. As of right now though, you know, we're definitely taking some of these approaches to these entities as well in regards to yeah, the down, the downspouts, the parking lots and even our building department. Right now, this is something that we've actually been, you know, looking into right now as part of our, you know, building department standards, you know, when there's new homes being built, when there's a significant amount of retrofit or, you know, work done. You know, we may require that, you know, certain measures are taken place put in there like the check valves and others, you know, so those are things that, you know, we're trying to do at this time.
And I think maybe just to, I, the, so as an example, one of the community groups we're working with, we've identified there's a connected downspout or a connected catch basin. We're meeting this week to, to talk about that. We've developed some conceptual plans about how that would get done. It's really just going to be a conversation about, you know, it's work on private property. So we have to get approval to do that, to work with them. So those, those do take some time and it could be something we report back to say how the meeting went and, you know, what the plan is for that particular location. There's, there's several that we've kind of identified.
Okay. And if I can, I will add one more thing and then I'm, and then I'm finished and you can finally move on to somebody else. But it's just that residents continue to ask for good communication. So I think if we could, two things specifically, if we could remind them if we find ourselves in this situation again, or if we are fearful that this is going to happen again, that we use whatever alert system we are utilizing at the time to remind them to stop adding water to the sanitary system while these events are happening. And the second thing that they have asked about is let them know whether or not they need to clear the drain. The city manager and I had, I had touched base with him about that. He said, it really kind of depends on what kind of rainfall we're getting and how quickly it's coming down. So if we could keep people educated and reminded and notified of whether they need to be clearing those drain outlets on their streets or not, I think that's one easy thing that we could, we could add that might be helpful in, in the event that this is actually happening again. And I will let it go there and let somebody else talk.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed, you have your hand up.
Thank you. We'll try to be as brief as possible and not redundant. Just one, I will add another voice for a complete audit of the system. I know it's an expense. I think we're a relatively small system. And I think, you know, the aggregate, we, we were presented with the financial impact to the city, but the aggregate financial impact to our residents is many, many, many times what the city suffered. And so that has to be a factor in what we need to do to resolve the system. So I'll, I think that point's been made. So I'll leave it at that. Just going back to the overall presentation and what I'm hearing from residents. This presentation is focused on the sanitary or the sewer system. I've had a lot of comments from both storm events about our stormwater system and those are the low-lying areas that we're talking about. Someone mentioned the 1,000 block of Lake Point, a lot of those streets. It wasn't the water, was the water in the basement maybe, but it was also the water in the street. In some houses, they had infiltration of that water into their homes or all the way up to their front steps. So I'm wondering if we're, if any of this process, if we're looking at what's going on with our storm pumps and what's going on, is there, are we going to assess that system and what that system needs? There were some, you know, episodes of, you know, pressure that were reported around the city. So I'm wondering if we're investigating that. So that's, I guess my first question is, where is the storm system piece fit into this overall analysis that we're undertaking?
Patrick, do you want to take that question?
So we're actually a little further along in the storm sewer system. As part of the, the work was done as part of the FEMA flood clean delineation several years back, a, a model was done of the entire storm sewer system. So we do have that already prepared. And so if that, if that's one thing that we want to start looking at, I think again, we, we probably have to look a little bit at the level of service for the storm sewer system. Because that, that is generally designed to a slightly smaller event for the 10-year type of that. So but if those are, if those flooding events are happening in areas that are creating, you know, significant issues, those could also be projects that are, you know, again, part of your CIP. If there's ways, you know, we can provide relief in the system. The, the network is, the pumping at the Patterson Park Station is part of it, but then the conveyance system is another part that we'd have to look at. So that's something that, working with administration, we can identify those areas and just do an audit of the model we have. And if there's any issues that, that we see from that.
Okay, that, that's separate from the presentation that we had tonight, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. All right, just moving on. So the presentation that we had was really isolated pretty much to our system. We even talked about those three miles of pipe that we don't control. But going back to one of the maps that Patrick Dros showed of the region and what separated and what's not, it looks like we're very much in our sanitary flow at the mercy of some of the home and Oakland County communities that, you know, we're, we reside, you know, downstream from those communities. So I think it looks like we also need a regional piece to address what's going on there, whether it's having them regulate their flows or having diverting their flows. I don't, I don't know. I don't have that engineering background, but it seems like without that, we're somewhat at the mercy of those other communities. Is that a fair statement?
I, I think that is fair. And I think that is something that as part of conversations next week with GLWA, that is, that is going to be definitely a point of discussion because, you know, we know of instances on Bedford, for instance, was looking at, at what happened with surcharge events where sewers that are not carrying Gross Point Park flow were surcharging into the city that they're not, normally not doing that. And so that has localized impacts, but that water has to go somewhere. So absolutely, it's all part of it. You know, I, I think as we look at it, there's probably a very similar conversation going on in many of the other communities. And while that's great, there's also a lot of value in having these, as, as Nick mentioned, as a watershed. So we're looking at, it's not a situation where, you know, the guy at the top of the hill can just pump, pump, pump and he's fine, but that's a problem for somebody downstream. We're all connected and, and that's one of the things that GLWA is trying to do with their master plan is to really make their system smarter to be able to, to manage that. But I think we want to be consistent about what we're doing for resiliency. We don't want one community deciding that at a 10-year event, you know, that's their emergency and they're going to turn all their pumps on. Whereas we can, we know we can manage a 25-year without a problem. You know, that, that's, that's not fair to our system either. So I think alignment of those goals is, is important. And then there could also be shared opportunities for projects that do benefit to that. You know, whether, you know, right now, the, the, the general process is, is that all that flow comes down to the, the Lower East Side for Detroit and it's managed by the large pumping stations. And whatever's not managed, it's just dumped into the river. And if you look at the history of how the system was developed, that was intentional because every, all of us are upstream of the, the drinking water intake at, at Belle Isle, basically. So there was a very intentional way to say, we're not going to let overflow happen to Lake St. Clair unless we, you know, it's not going to be part of the system. We got to get that down to the treatment plant. You know, that, that said, I think there's, there's ways now with, with what we call retention basins or, or partial treatment that can ensure that the water that we are discharging, it's at least has some level of treatment to it. So GLWA is really going to be more equipped to handle those type of discussions. But the point of, of what manager Seislin is saying is that we're upfront about right now that we want a, a basically aligned approach on some of these things.
Okay. Do we have a GIS mapping of our system for Gross Point Park?
Yes.
We do have that. Okay. Just really quickly. And, you know, okay, so what I'm hearing is in order to even be considered for a permit from Eagle for a relief point, we have to take these dry out measures, which, one of which is the downspout disconnection ordinance revising that. Is that correct?
Nick, I'm not sure I can add if you have something to say on, on this one.
Yeah. So, you know, part of those conversations that we've had with Eagle, one that they'd like to see a more aggressive approach from the city in regards to its downspout disconnection. And that's why you see the ordinance before you tonight for your consideration. Ours had not been updated in some time. And this is something that we certainly want to take a more approach to as well. You know, they're looking, you know, at, you know, how are you going to measure this, you know, are you going to discharge at one-year events? Are you going to discharge at five or 10? They want to be able to have a threshold to say, okay, Gross Point Park is, you know, is at this level and this is when they discharge their event. You know, so we've had, we've backed up our, our facts and our information of our infrastructure to show that this is when, you know, we're, we're doing so is where, you know, you know, some things in the past, you'd be able to discharge at any time. But we want to obviously be careful to the environment. We also, you know, we need to stop flooding basements. You know, this is something that, you know, we've expressed to Eagle that this is something that they have actually been, you know, discussing more that they need to provide relief points for cities like Gross Point Park and others, you know, that we just can't handle these anymore. And so they have given us a path to go ahead for the EERV. There's just a couple of these that we need to meet in order to get there.
So that's, that's my question. As best I can tell, the, the, the downspout disconnection ordinance on the books is from 2003. We discussed it in this before my time on council, but we discussed it as something that residents should be doing after the 2016 storm event, but there was not a revision to the ordinance at that time?
That is correct. That is correct.
And, and Eagle is looking at our ordinance and telling us that either they're looking at it and saying it's not stringent enough or we need you to take some additional measures to dry out your system and administration determined that tightening our downspout disconnection ordinance would be one of those measures.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and thank you to the administrative team and Mr. Dros. I'm just going to focus my comment in a way that recognizes our role as a city council. And as a result of that, would really encourage staff to recommend appropriate roles for us that will enable us to think strategically and consider the available management tools that we have that can help us drive results. And perhaps some of those recommendations can come at the August 23rd meeting. I think it's really important for us to stay out of your way and clear a path and therefore work in tandem with you and with your input. So some examples might be, and I always refer to this as strategic and careful pressure, you know, how we can do that. Do you need us to bolster your voice or give you tools in the form of some sort of resolution that invites our fellow Gross Points or the Jeff Chalmers area or other entities and agencies to work collaboratively or perhaps under the, the provisions of an MOA? Do we need to formally document conditions that you can then carry forward to the various agencies? Do we need to request from the administrative team a structure for what a district, a watershed district might look like? Do we need to formalize some other communication that you can then advance to agency? So I would just ask that you be thinking that way of how we can all stay in our lanes and we free the path for you to move forward while doing our job and supporting you. And another thought that came to mind is what other entities can help us put the pressure where it needs to be, like the Public Service Commission, which oversees public utilities. I mean, do we need to formally submit a request or a concern to them? So that would be a later question to answer. And then to wrap this up tonight in particular, because I know our city manager needs to get his new family home from the hospital. Do, are you looking for a motion tonight? I know you said, Mr. Dros, you were looking for some concurrence. Do, do we need to demonstrate that to you beyond consensus or in some sort of formal way?
And in discussion with the city, with manager Seislin, this, the, what, what the administration's looking for from us tonight is sense a council to proceed down the path that they've laid out. And then when it comes to committing to specific dollars as a result of some of the bidding that was described, then it would come back to council to approve those components that will require retaining other firms. So I, I believe that that's what you're looking for. And Nick, you can highlight that as well if you, if you want.
Yeah, the Mayor Denner is correct. You know, what we're looking for is, you know, your comments and feedback tonight, as I know Councilmember McConnell, Reed, Hodges and Fluid have all discussed, and I'm sure there could be maybe Robson or Rayland as well. And we're looking for what your sense is, you know, are, you know, are you, are you, you know, do you like this path that we're moving forward with? You know, obviously funding is something that, you know, we always have a challenge with, but we're, you know, we want to take this as a multifaceted approach that we can take now, but as well, we can go in the corresponding years to continue this program. This is something that we don't want to just do once and then we're done. We want this to be a continual program that every year we're evaluating these systems in play.
Thank you. And then one final note, I did notice that the city of Gross Point has its engineers providing them with a report on September 20th as to their review of what they feel happened the evening of the event. So you're probably already aware of that, but if not, it might be helpful to observe that. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Roland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you that see me smiling here and there, if I don't smile, I'm going to start crying sometimes with all the poop that's been going on around here. I want to thank council members McConnell, Fluid and Reed for their questions. Those are some really good questions and they addressed a lot of mine. So I'll be pretty short. I want to thank Patrick Dros and, and city manager Seislin for this community engagement. This is necessary and appreciated. It may not answer all our questions. This is necessary and appreciated. It may not answer all our questions, but it's something we need to continue to do. And you guys are doing it well. Um, one question is, has a full sewer inspection occurred previously? Have we ever done one in Gross Point Park?
As far as since I, since I have been city manager, no, this is not something that we have done. Otherwise, maybe the mayor could comment if this is, uh, something that they've done. It might've been around the sewer separation. There could have been some work done then.
I know sewer separation came before my time. Since I've been, uh, on council, I'm not aware of anything where we've done the entire system. I am aware of some things that we've done focused work on. But not the entire system. I don't know if, uh, anybody's, in any event, it's been long enough. It needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah. My next question was, was, has OHM advised us to do this prior, prior? Do you know of anything, Patrick?
Really, I, I think our, our prior efforts have really focused more on, on the modeling side of things. You know, that, that's relative to the relief valve. That was kind of the, the main goal. As we talked about after the event of, of the July storm, as we looked at where flooding was happening and, and a strategy about, you know, where do we start? Some of the, the sporadic nature of it really led us to, you know, just call that to question and, and really kind of elevated the need for it. Because it's a matter of, you know, if it was all in one area, it would be a pretty easy thing. But because it was more spread out, um, I think that really emphasizes the need to, to, to span out across the city.
Yeah. And that leads to my, my last comment on that question is I'm, I'm in full support of a full analysis as well. Maybe that's something we can put on the agenda for, for August meeting. The next question I have is of the CCTV report. Will it share specific issues such as the thousand block of Lake Point, a thousand block of Nottingham is getting two feet of water every time it rains heavily? Or the intersection at Berkshire and St. Paul, just to say certain things that really flood high. Will that CCTV report be shared? So residents can kind of rest a little easier saying, hey, this problem was a potent, the potential cause was identified and then resolved. I know, I know a lot of the residents that, that are, are, are fed up for right reason. Anytime it rains, we have to run to our basements and check and, you know, get home and, and move everything upstairs. So we don't know anything. So I'm wondering how detailed those CCTV reports will be, uh, on that. Uh, I know you talked about a dashboard, which is something I love. I love, uh, dashboards. Because we can check status and progress and it's very transparent. So I'm wondering how detailed those reports will be from the CCTV findings.
So I think definitely picking up the fact that the sewer, uh, reports are going to be extremely detailed because they will be basically a camera going through every foot of height. So every defect that we find, it's going to note those, it's going to, it's actually going to improve our data, um, about the system overall. Because we're, we're going to find out exactly where sewer taps are, which actually will help if, if a resident needs to do work on their sewer. We'll have an actual X Y location where it is, where we didn't have that before. So there's a benefit to that. Picking up on manager Seisland's find it, fix it. When we go out and do this work, um, there's typically a process where the contractor is going to go and put door hangers on everybody's house. Uh, because when this work does happen, because you have to clean the line first, um, there can be situations where it can push some, some sewer gas and things like that into homes. Uh, so we want to let people know about that, uh, when it's going to happen. But as, as we do that, so basically they're going to know it's coming because we'll have the door hanger out there. Um, and then if we do happen to find anything that's significant, and we talked about kind of having a standing report, that can be something that we can really kind of share. Like, you know, the contractor got this many feet of, of, you know, inspection done over those last two-week period and found these type of problems, just to kind of give people an idea of, of what is being found. If there's anything that's of, uh, critical importance to a resident, I think that can be brought up. But generally speaking, what's found in these, uh, reports are really related to more pipe defects, um, that aren't going to necessarily have a significant effect on the property. But it does queue up that capital improvement. If it's something we need to do right away, we know it. But if it's something that we just put it on, on the plan for year one or two or three, whatever that is, you know, that, that'll be something that we'll have. And it's, it's all digitized as well. So we can pull it right up on a JS map and find out, you know, where the worst problems are.
That's great. And my, my last comment is, uh, with your dashboard reporting, I'm wondering if we can, we can have a dashboard that, that goes block by block. So if I live on the thousand block of Nottingham, I keep bringing that up because they got really nailed and they continually get nailed, that they can go to this dashboard, go right to their, their block and see what's being done, what's been done, what they found. And then again, just so they can rest easy and go on vacations on the weekend. And if, if they know it's going to rain, it's okay to leave. I mean, our residents are really, really on the gun to run home, like after, the after six event, when we heard the siren, all of us were trying to run home and, and it was, it was mayhem. And because every, every two weeks, something's going in our basement. So I just want to be able, I'm a resident as well. So I want to be able to rest easy saying, hey, they came down my street. They found this happening. Possibly they fixed it. Let's see what happens at the next rain. That, that's, that's where I'm getting just a transparent dashboard would really help us all rest, rest easy a little bit. And I, I appreciate all the work you guys put in this plan. It's really, it's really helpful. So thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Robson.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. And I'll be brief. Uh, I know there's going to be a lot of public comment. And I appreciate the questions of my colleagues. And Mr. Drews, I really appreciate your presentation. It seems like a, a good competent plan, uh, going forward. Now, you mentioned CCTV assessment of the entire system. Is that correct?
In, in the packet, that's what we, um, we estimated for the whole system. We had suggested that, that doing a, a 20% cross-section, we give a representative value, but certainly some of the, the, the points made around the table today suggest that maybe doing a more, uh, system-wide approach might be beneficial as well. Which we, you know, we, we certainly agree that it's beneficial. It's just the, the cost of it.
Okay. And I'll be brief. You're talking the 20%. Has that, uh, smoke testing commenced?
So the, the 20% of the assessment would be the, the cameras, the, the smoke testing, um, I believe was, was completed in 2016. And, and there, there may be some additional areas that we target in the coming weeks that, uh, city staff, um, uh, may advance.
Okay. So the CCTV is the 20%. We've talked about that, uh, apparently, and Nick, you can answer this question. There's a cost factor here as to why we're not doing more than the 20%. And you, what is the, the estimate on the 20% in terms of, uh, finance? If you know.
Off, uh, I know the entire amount we're looking at, we did a system wide was roughly about 1.6 million. However, you know, with the funds that we are proposing, this would be about $280,000 for this 20% of the, uh, system.
Does it make sense to do 20% a year for five years? Does that make any sense at all?
Uh, obviously I think, uh, you know, a lot of it's due to funding, but, uh, you know, if we could, I would like to increase then from what I'm hearing from council tonight, I think Patrick and I are going to go back and see if we can increase that number for the program, uh, so that maybe we end up doing it, uh, in a two or three-year span. I know, uh, you know, in, in some cities, uh, like Gross Point Woods, for example, you know, this is an approach that's a multi-year program, uh, that they, you know, might have in a five-year capital improvement or such. But obviously with the events we've just had, we want to try and fast track these as, as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've covered, uh, oh, uh, I think we've covered it. Well, thank you. Uh, my, my sense of counsel is that, uh, uh, we would like, uh, the administration to go full speed ahead on the steps that they outlined and to, uh, also strongly consider broadening the, uh, the assessment and looking for funding that would enable a more, uh, a shorter term look at the whole system, um, if, if possible. So as, as was pointed out, there's going to be a funding constraint on that. And so it'll, it'll be, uh, up the administration to look at how that might be able to be funded, whether additional grants. Uh, some of these things, as was pointed out earlier, may become more affordable to us depending on, uh, the results of, for example, the infrastructure bill that came through, uh, that, that is working its way, uh, through at the federal level. Other sources of funding that, uh, that were mentioned, uh, tonight. Some of those may be able to brought to bear, to be, be able to be brought to bear to accelerate, uh, the, uh, the assessment phase. So I'd say that sense of council was move ahead. And if you can find a way to fund a, a more broad assessment of the system, that council would be in support. Okay. With that, uh, thank you very much. That was a, a good comprehensive discussion and, uh, clearly very engaged council and, uh, very engaged, uh, administration. So I appreciate it all the way around. Uh, we, we, we touched on, uh, the downspouts, uh, a bit before, uh, during that. And, uh, the next, uh, couple of topics on our agenda are very specific, short-term things related to downspouts. And I'll ask the, uh, administration to take over with the next one, which is, uh, uh, downspout and illicit connection. Source material that I believe he's, uh, the administration's proposing, uh, be distributed, but wanted to share with us first. So, uh, city manager Seisland?
I, yes. Thank you, Mayor Denner. Uh, so working with, uh, Public Works, uh, you know, we have developed a, uh, informational piece that we are going to be putting on our city website and issuing through, uh, uh, the communicator as well, uh, for assistance, uh, from the community, to, uh, you know, take a look around your home, kind of, you know, maybe, you know, a little bit of homework, uh, walk around your home tomorrow. See if you have any areas, uh, you know, of downspouts, uh, that are connected. You know, something that, uh, you know, Public Works and I have talked about is similar to our lead service line identification program. You know, we, we really like to, uh, be able to help visit your home, uh, show you those areas that we would like to, uh, you know, disconnect uh, from the system where the proper and safe areas to do so, as well as finding, um, you know, contractors that if you're not able to do so, uh, within the area that are able to do this at a, a low cost. And so, uh, with that said, I'll let Tom Jenny and Pat Thomas, uh, talk about this as well and their experiences and what they're going to be doing moving forward. Uh, Tom, Pat, take it away.
Yeah, I did discuss a little bit of that, uh, with, uh, Tom Jenny, uh, earlier on, uh, what was that? Probably about a week ago or so, about, uh, what we're going to be capable of doing for the residents if need be. Again, uh, with inspections going around the house, everything else, they should also check grade as far as water being shed away from the house also, which also could be an impact on that. Backyard drains, again, with, uh, in your, uh, backyards, basically draining from your garages and the driveway and such, something that we can look at also. But, uh, as far as any kind of questions or anything else, you can definitely give us a call at the DPW and we will definitely come by and take a look at all the homes if need be.
Yes. Um, yeah, I'm going to speak up really now, if you don't mind. Um, I helped with this program back in Gross Point Woods a bunch of years ago before I came over to the park here. And, um, yeah, the DPW is on board with whatever we need to get done with everybody. You know, we're not pushing the blame on any homeowners. It's just, we're trying to help everyone out with the same thing that we're all trying to get done here is dry the system out. So we are here to help 110% and give our input and with contractors or whatever anybody else needs. We can definitely help out with that.
And so just as a, uh, a figure, something that, uh, you know, you know, we, we were looking into just as a fact is that a typical 1,500 square foot home, uh, can redirect potentially 25,000 gallons of water each year away from the sewer system by disconnecting those downspouts. A neighborhood of 100 homes, for example, could redirect two and a half million gallons of water each year away from the sewer system by disconnecting, redirecting them. So this is kind of one of those things where, you know, we're, as DPW discussed and others, that this is a approach not only by the city, by, by the residents is like a huddle. We're all in this together, you know, we need to, uh, come together, uh, you know, with our engineering team, DPW and residents and that. You know, if we're all doing our part, we can certainly drought this system. And so, uh, after this meeting tonight, uh, we'll have this information further on the website. And it looks like I've got potentially some questions. Uh, council member Reed, go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment and, and a, a suggestion. With the downspout disconnection, this was something that was also discussed after the 2016 storm events. And we do have this ordinance, we do have an ordinance on the books right now. And the comments that I've been receiving from residents, I mean, I've had many residents tell me, well, I thought it was grandfathered in. I've been in my house for 25 or more years, never had a problem. I never had water in my basement until June 26, 2021. I've also, so that's one, uh, comment. I've also heard from a number of residents who bought homes within, within, since 2016, who have connected downspouts, who were a, basically able to purchase a home and obtain a certificate of occupancy with those downspouts connected. So, um, there is some, you know, we're not enforcing the ordinance we have on the books. So I'd like to see that. I mean, I have some questions about it, but my suggestion is, I like this piece that you're putting out. We have a, an amendment to the ordinance that you're proposing tonight. I know we have a lot of people that want to make public comment and we typically have public comment before we pass an ordinance. So since we already have this piece that you're offering tonight and we have the means to enforce the ordinance, which hasn't been fully enforced, my suggestion is that we table the amendment to our August 23rd meeting. Take the public comment and go ahead with the downspout disconnection information that you want to put out to the residents that we have now. And, um, it just occurred to me because I know we have a lot of people that might want to comment on this proposed ordinance. And I really would like to hear public comment before voting on it. And I don't think we're talking about a whole lot of time here. And we do have a mechanism. We have an ordinance in place that hasn't been fully enforced. So we can still go ahead with what, uh, the DPW representatives already presented. So I, that's just a suggestion for me.
That'll be, uh, in the next agenda item, council can decide to table if, if we wish. And I, I guess that's a discussion we'll have in the next agenda item. I think right now, um, as you state, as you, uh, commented, uh, Councilmember Reed, this is a good piece and, and provides good information to our residents to, uh, to move ahead. The ordinance that, uh, when we, when we, when we do get to amending it, assuming we do amend it, gives, gives us better tools, more specific tools, as, as, uh, you probably are aware of, having, having analyzed it. Other comments or questions regarding this, uh, this piece that, uh, the administration is about to, uh, to post. Councilmember McConnell?
I was just going to ask, ask that, uh, you know, some printouts be in different, uh, high-traffic areas as well. So that, uh, you know, we maximize getting the information to as many residents as possible. And then, um, it might be worth having some kind of further community dialogue. Sort of a lot mirroring along the lines of what council member Reed's saying. I, it'd be good if there could be a little more two-way conversation, whatever form it takes.
Okay. So there's always a struggle between the time for two-way communication and the need to act quickly. So probably a happy medium, as you know, which, uh, perhaps Councilmember Reed has, uh, come upon for this, this topic. Anything else on this one? Okay. I think those are good suggestions on the, uh, distribution of this, uh, this piece. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the administration, uh, city manager DPW for working on it. Uh, with that, let's move on to the, uh, the topic we've been talking about a little bit more from time to time during other, uh, other, other topics tonight, which is a, a first concrete step that, uh, has come before council. And that is to strengthen our downspout ordinance. Our, our current one, apparently has, we, we've found is, uh, is lacking when you compare to what we'd like to accomplish in also other communities. And, uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the administration to introduce the, this amendment to the ordinance and what its, uh, key components are. City manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. I'm going to, uh, turn this over to a city attorney, Holland, who prepared this amendment, uh, as well. And then, um, uh, I can provide further comment afterwards.
Thank you, city manager Seisland. Um, and so what you have before you today is really, it's an amendment to, uh, section seven dash one four, but also the addition of section seven dash one five and seven dash one six. They all fit together, um, and, and are essentially a package deal. and are essentially a package deal. Seven one four deals with the downspouts, seven one five is the illicit connections and seven one six is sort of the enforcement and penalty provision. What we hope to accomplish with this, and I think the mayor touched on it, is to make it more uniform, more consistent with what other communities have. It makes the process much less subjective, strengthens the city's ability to weigh the exemptions. But also provides for a much more detailed appeals process. And so I think really what we were trying to do is strike a balance between the city being able to enforce action that will assist in in reducing the impact on the system, but also keep in mind, you know, keeping in tune with what councilmember Reed mentioned. You know, that some downspouts may need to be connected, disconnecting them may create problems. You know, that that we want to avoid. And so the purpose of this is to make that process, like I said, more uniform, more consistent, easier to enforce, but also giving the residents the opportunity and leeway to present, you know, reasons for an exemption. And then if denied, more robust appeals process with a specific appeals board that would include a resident of the city sitting on it. So that's the general overview of it. And, you know, I'm happy to take questions or, you know, if you guys are going to entertain a motion to table it, however you want to proceed, I'm happy to address it.
Any other questions or comments about the ordinance itself as presented? Councilmember McConnell.
All right. I just wanted to clarify the, the penalties. They, these are commonplace. You're saying that they seem pretty stringent for someone. You know, I mean, you're talking about a misdemeanor, fine. So I'm just curious if that's the norm or.
It's consistent with what we reviewed. A misdemeanor is really for continuing violation, a refusal to comply. I think if you look at the enforcement, it's sort of a stepped enforcement. There's a notice of a violation. The resident would have an opportunity to correct the problem themselves. If they don't correct it and the city corrects it, the fine is geared specifically to just cover those administrative and remediation costs. It's not designed to be punitive. And then again, the misdemeanor is just sort of a enforcement mechanism, really probably, you know, in some sense, more designed for larger issues or discharges. Again, none of this is meant to be punitive and the residents will be given plenty of opportunity to come into compliance. It's in other words, nobody's going to get a misdemeanor. If somebody notices a downspout going into the, the system, they receive a notice, they have an opportunity to cure. If they don't cure, the city can cure and seek reimbursement for that. If for whatever reason that violation continues, then it elevates from there.
Thank you.
Councilor Reed, and then I, then I want to come back around to our process here tonight. Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Okay, well, maybe I was going to come back to that. I do have some questions about the specific ordinance and they're really more for administration. But at this point, I also, I mean, I would go back to what I said earlier. The agenda came out very late last night. I think I received it at 7:30 and we normally do have an ordinance review process. So I, I mean, I would favor especially with administration having the tool, some tools available now to to proceed with downspout disconnections. I would move to table consideration of this ordinance until our August 23 council meeting and direct administration to go forward with downspout disconnection under the current ordinance to allow for time for public comment and review.
So you're putting a motion on the floor. Is there support for that?
I'll support.
Okay, there is support. Any further discussion before we call the roll on that?
Mayor, I would just ask the administration, are they comfortable with this tabling? Are there any deadlines that council is not aware that might suggest that we should do this tonight? As opposed to the next council meeting?
Well, just, you know, I can advise on, you know, obviously our current ordinance and then this ordinance that's here today. Our current ordinance right now allows for many exemptions, you know, at its present right now, including if you have standing water in your background, in your backyard that you may be able to tie into the system. This speaks actually to the illicit connection portion of this ordinance that we're updating that we need to find these areas that are, you know, connected into our system that are, you know, significant contributions to the system. And so, you know, we added that component into there and that's as part of this CCTV program. That's going to be able to help us as well identify that when we're actually, you know, looking in a sewer line, you know, if we end up seeing more than one connection, you know, into the, the main, then obviously, you know, we know that there is a connection there that we have to identify. You know, and speaking with Eagle, you know, this is something that they, they do monitor and they take a look at city ordinances as well. You know, we've, we have adopted Dwayne County stormwater standards and this is something that we have used in, in regards to building for other properties that they need to comply with the standard. You know, Eagle is looking that this is, this is a step in the right approach, especially for urban community to update its ordinance, especially with these stronger events. You know, we even looked at, you know, resident communities like Gross Point Woods, who had a similar process for their appeals that, you know, really, you know, allows not only a resident would be able to look at this appeal process, the city engineer, the DPW who would be able to, you know, hear that story of why they need to have it connected. I cannot, I can't recall who exactly said it, but there's some cases where you may need to have one or two downspouts that need to be connected due to just, there's no area to discharge and you don't want to discharge into a neighbor's basement foundation or those of that sort. You know, my, my only concern of tabling this tonight, and this is just, is this just my simple concern is that, you know, we obviously want to take a very aggressive approach into drying out our system. I respect all the council members, you know, comments that certainly we do have something on the books right now in that we're able to enforce that, but I'm just concerned with, you know, the possible exemptions that we have in our current ordinance that that could be used at this time when we're really trying to, you know, dry out the system. So, you know, I, I would, I would humbly recommend that we move forward, but simply, but I as well will, you know, be happy to hear from council and then if we table that, we can have further discussion at that August 23 meeting.
Okay, yeah, my, my comment would be if, if we feel like this ordinance is on track that we should, we should consider putting it on the books tonight, but I'm also, if the majority of council wants to follow the tabling, then, then that's fine. And we'll just delay the whole, you know, we'll delay the process two and a half weeks and so. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just circle back to what councilmember Robson said. Are we up against a deadline? Now, or is two and a half weeks? Adequate time for what we're doing. That's
When we get the next storm. People we can help in the meantime, it's, who knows?
So there's councilmember Reed, there's not a hard deadline, like you have to therefore at this time in order to start this process. However, you know, there are benchmarks that Eagle obviously wants to see as part that, you know, you, you took this step, you know, you went forward with this and then you moved there. So obviously if we did take that step on August 23, you know, that's going to show well. Tonight, same thing. I would just humbly recommend, you know, whether it was tonight or in August 23, that we strongly consider this ordinance and taking immediate action.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Other comments on the tabling motion? Hands up on the table.
I have my hand up. Yeah. Yeah.
You'd interesting enough, I can't see your hand. Oh, there it was. It's buried by by the public beginning to put their hands up for public comment. Sorry, Councilmember.
Well, that's okay. I'm fine just jumping in. Um, you know, I had noticed that we didn't have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And the more I think about it, the more I'm, I'm a, I'm a fan of consistency. I'm a fan of always allowing the public to weigh in before we put forward a new ordinance or an amended ordinance. I'm, I'm super in favor of disconnecting downspouts, but I think, you know, a 19 day delay is not going to make a huge difference so that we can go through the proper steps to make this change or update. I also think there's nothing stopping us from going ahead and educating people and reminding them that this has been a requirement for years. Certainly, if people still have connected downspouts, they don't have to wait until August 23 to rectify that problem. So I'm going to be in favor just because that is our process of tabling it. But, you know, definitely addressing it on August 23.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Did I say something, Mayor? One, one thing real quick?
Yes.
It's, I just want to let everyone know that, you know, with the downspout disconnection, I think is very important. Now, when we did the sewer separation, everything else, that also takes into the account of those downspouts also. System was built years ago to handle downspouts, to handle everything, to handle the sanitary, everything else. As far as the downspouts go and everything else, along with the sewer separation that we did in 97, that's something that was really wasn't looked at that well. As far as I, I see, I know we tried to get it done, everything else. It's obviously going to get done at some point. But the amount of water that goes into the system with this, with these storm sewer being separated, along with taking some of the bigger pipes of the sanitary to use for the storm always causes a problem with that. And the reasoning behind that with the downspouts being connected the way they are, is just putting, it's taxing the sanitary even more. Just for the fact is that we had to separate those lines, the bigger lines in order to convey that extra water. So I believe that it's something that should be done. And then, like you said, two weeks. Yeah. That's fine. I would, I would agree with that too. But yeah, something that should be done.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Thomas. Other comment before we call a question on the, on the tabling motion. Okay, what? Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I told a few people that I would ask this question about. If I, I understand there's going to be a possibility for exemption coming up with that exemption process by August 23, really, really helpful for some people or who, who the jury is going to be for that. And then also, I don't know if there's going to be any funding available. If someone has a really bad situation at their house where it's going to cost $20,000 to fix infiltration, but we're not able to exempt them. I don't know if there's any kind of funding that the city can help with or anything to look forward to. I don't know if there is, I doubt if there is, but just something to think about. And Nick, I know you've been creative sometimes in finding ways to find, help residents. So that's all I had. And I support delaying it as well.
Councilmember McConnell, you had your hand up, I think.
Well, I don't, it's probably a moot point, but we do have a lot of residents in attendance. I don't know if there's a way to shift the order on the agenda, maybe move up public comment so that if people wanted to weigh in on a specific issue before we took any action. So.
I think the agenda is the agenda, but we can table it to August 23. That's certainly the motion on the floor. With that, I think let's call the question on the motion to table. Clerk Blake, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Lewitt.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
We'll go with a yes. Motion passes. So we will consider the ordinance officially on August 23. And that will close that agenda item and we can move on to public comment. Council, should we move right to public comment? We've been at this for two and a half hours or should we take a five minute break?
I say we keep going.
Okay. Okay, administration, we'll, we'll throw it back to you for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Denner. So what I'm going to do, I do have two written public comments that I'm going to share. And then I will end up going to a voice comment with a three minute timer. This first comment comes from Mr. Joe Gleason. My question is regarding flood maps and flood simulations. Using the service such as floodmaps.net and water elevations, it's possible to recreate the same flood patterns we witnessed in drone videos as well as accurately identify affected home locations and severity of damage. My first question is, has the city explored similar simulations as it will identify two key risk factors? Which areas are at risk of street level car and front door home flooding? Which street level drains, if connected to sewer lines, represent the greatest risk of sewer back basement backups? My second question is where and when? What street surface drains are still connected to storm sewer and when will those be fixed? Has the city considered using digital tags such as Apple's Bluetooth tracking device? These can be placed in storm lines to track where indeed water is flowing. Each device is $30 and would report its endpoint sewage pumping or Patterson stormwater. My final question. Given extreme pressure put on sewer drains by having street storm water still being connected to sewer lines, it's my understanding many homes suffered structural damage to their drains. Will the city plan on helping to repair those? Thank you for holding this meeting tonight. I understand giving outstanding litigation. You may not be able to respond publicly. I hope these comments are considerations part of the strategic planning moving forward. This next comment comes from Chuck Pinter. Page nine of PDF, page one of OHM memo under the bullet manhole inspection, the last sentence appears to get cut off. What is the rest of the text? Page 10 of PDF, page two of OHM memo. OHM recommends evaluation of sanitary system only. Why not the storm system as well? Has GPP asked OHM to estimate costs for this storm system too? Page 13 of PDF, page two of OHM August 3rd memo. 100,000 seems light for emergency repairs. It is my opinion this number should be double that amount given the age of the current infrastructure. Mayor Denner, those are the written public comments and I'm going to go ahead and start the process for the spoken public comment. I'm just going to share my screen real quick.
Thank you.
Hey, Nick, while you're doing that, I'm just asking Patrick if he can update that PowerPoint. I saw that, the missing last sentence as well before we posted.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk with Patrick. Okay. The first one I have is Richard. Richard, I'm going to ask you to unmute and then if you can go ahead and please get started.
Good evening. My name is Richard Sandifer. Hold on, I want to turn down the Okay. My comment is if we had done all of the things that are currently being suggested by the city engineer and they had been completed at the beginning of this summer, would that have prevented the flood event of June?
Nick, you're muted.
Thanks, Councilmember Rayland. Molly Clark, you are next. If you want to, please go ahead and say your name and your address and we'll get started.
My name is Molly Clark and I live at 1048A Lake Point Street. And I share the same concern that councilmember Reed addressed in that the presentation about the plan for the sewers is only for the sanitary sewers. But my home is specifically and negatively impacted by the storm sewers, not just sanitary. I live in the townhouses at 1048 Lake Point and the storm drain in the alley behind our building as well as the drains on the lawn and in the street in front have proven to be problematic during the June 26 water event and multiple rainstorms that have come through since then. Two compassionate gentlemen from the DPW were here yesterday to look at the drains and they said they saw no issues that should cause a backup. And while I appreciate that they came out to take a look, that didn't alleviate my concern because there's still a problem, even though they couldn't see or identify the issue. I have lived in this particular home for over 10 years and this is the first summer that the drains have been a problem with the water backing up and encroaching upon my front door as well as the door of my attached garage. So my question is, what has changed and how do we fix it? The June 26 water event resulted in a true and serious safety hazard. The entire garage and my whole first floor had standing water that was likely electrified. So there was no safe way for me to exit my home. Had I been able to safely reach one of the doors trying to exit, would have been detrimental to open either door due to the fact that the water level outside was so high, it would have let in even more rainwater. to open either door due to the fact that the water level outside was so high, it would have let in even more rainwater. And every time it's rained since then, I've checked the drains to make sure that they're not backed up by any debris and they have been clear. However, the drains still do not keep up with the rain and they overflow with pooling water creeping back closer and closer to both the doors of my home. I already had a vehicle totaled due to standing water inside my garage and I can't think of a safer place where I should be parking my next vehicle once I manage to get a replacement. So I'm sure you can all understand my concern every time there's rain in the forecast, wondering if I will once again be trapped inside my home with no safe escape route. So I respectfully request that you please consider the storm sewers, not just the sanitary sewers. Thank you.
Next, I have John Hunter. Uh, John, if you could please uh, state your name and area of residence and uh, please go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Nick, and my, my name's John Hunter. I live on the seven hundred block of, of Barrington. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to mention is, I'm glad that the city is um, confident that we will uh, receive FEMA funds uh, to, to reimburse the city. Though at the same point, it is frustrating to hear that the, the city is very confident we'll get these funds while the citizens, we're, we're in a completely um, different boat, not something that you all control. But throughout this process, um, it's been very discouraging and also worrisome how our federal government um, operates. Again, that's not something any of you um, can do. Um, my second comment, uh, on six twenty-six, we have about four feet of water in our basement. Um, seven sixteen, six inches, and then on seven twenty-four, uh, we had a water alarm and as notified, and I went down there right away. And what I noticed was water coming up our storm drain first, it started puddling around there. Um, and then uh, up through um, the um, sanitary drain. And so my, my question is, are the systems truly separated? Um, because when it's coming up both those drains at essentially the same time, and then I almost immediately after they start puddling, as I was in a panic to get our hoses out the window, had my drain set up, the water immediately went right back down, almost as if someone had hit a switch, the pump turned on and the, the uh, issue was alleviated. Um, and so uh, again, just wondering if the, the, the system's truly separated. Um, uh, that also being said, being on the seven hundred block of Barrington, our sewer line in our backyard, we share with Detroit. Uh, does, does that have any um, uh, impact on, on where we're at? Uh, knowing that uh, that sewer line, the house is on the other side of the fence or on Alter in Detroit and, and we share, you know, that line, is that something that's been um, considered? Uh, we have had our drains inspected, both the, the sanitary and sewer, both are fine, they're, they're clear. Uh, there's no issues of our downspouts are disconnected. Um, I did find that um, after this event, it's almost a blessing in disguise that uh, previous waterproofing done at the house, they have everything connected to the storm system. Uh, we're in the process of having contractors come out and give us estimates to, to disconnect that, put a sump in so we can uh, you know, be a part of the solution, but um, we're fortunate enough that we're gonna be able to do that. Uh, not every resident is able to do that, and so um, as others have mentioned, is there gonna be um, funding or assistance for residents that aren't able um, to do that. So um, again, I, I appreciate everyone's time and everything that everyone's doing. Nick, you've been very responsive when I reached out to you. And also uh, Pat Thomas came out to my house and inspected things and I appreciated his time as well, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, uh, next I have. Next I have T Zink. Um, if you wanna go ahead and please state your full name and address and uh, please go ahead.
Sure. Hi, my name is Tracy Zink. I live at twelve seventeen Bishop. And I just wanted to lend my voice to the others who have already raised concerns over the fact that the, the plan that was proposed this evening does not include the storm system. Um, I didn't go door to door on our street and survey all of our neighbors after that flood event on the, on, on, in June um, or any of the subsequent events where many of my neighbors were affected. But in the conversations that I did have with folks who experienced water in their homes, it was not as a result of sewage backing up into their basements. Um, and though I certainly wouldn't change places with any of the folks who um, unfortunately did have sewage in their basements, if we're not looking at the storm system, we're missing a big chunk of folks who are affected as well. So uh, just wanted to, again, highly encourage folks who have the ability to, to do something, uh, do something about the storm system as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Robert Carr. Uh, Robert, if you could please state your name and city of residence and uh, please go ahead.
All right, my name's Bob Carr. I'm at thirteen eighty-seven Buckingham. It's the gargoyle house. Gargoyles protect against evil spirits but not against water, okay? Now, I appreciate the discussion that we've had today, but it has really seemed for the most part to be disconnected from the actual problem. I've lived at this address for twenty-eight years. Downspouts have been connected. I've had no floods until the last three, three weeks or so and I've had two. So urgencies around downspouts, it does not make sense. What I'm looking for is the assurance that the city has a handle on how to keep my basement dry. In automotive, we look at two things, containment, what do you do in the short run? Root cause, what do you do in long term? A lot of the discussion today was about medium and longer term. Modeling and meters are not gonna keep my basement dry. Green solutions are not gonna keep my basement dry in the near term. The short-term solution has been basically that I should concede defeat, that you're not gonna keep my basement dry. I should put in sump pumps, backflow valves and do something uh, uh, about downspouts. And longer term, spend more money, okay? A- and yet, none of this addresses what really happened. What really happened is only five out of fourteen pumping stations were working, okay? There was a power cable cut at Freud Station. Nobody bothered to tell anybody, neither their bosses at GLWA, okay? And they didn't staff for emergencies. They did not have electricians on duty to take care of the problems. You folks signed the contract with GLWA. So what the transformation that I'm looking for is for the council to demand accountability from their business partners, the people they've signed agreements with. Because like I said, I've been in my residence for twenty-eight years and I've only had two floods. And the solution that I'm looking for from the council is something more than I should spend more money. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, next we have uh, Cheryl Dunman. If you could uh, please state your name and address and uh, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dunman and I reside on Pemberton Road. I thank you City Manager Nick for your leadership to solve this complex technical issue at a municipal level. I do expect council and other leaders to also support you and work to stay in their lane for efficiency to solve this. It's the time to act quickly and move forward. Tabling this and doing nothing as Councilmember Reed and Councilmember McConnell just accomplished does not serve Gross Point Park residents well. The two thousand sixteen flood, remember, was in September. From a responsible resident point of view, the homeowner's solutions are proven, they're affordable, and this isn't novel. These homeowner capital investments to install and maintain engineering controls for proper stormwater management are highly effective. Homeowners disconnected from the system and with those protective measures for stormwater management in place now as described briefly in the presentation tonight, do experience less impact from storms. We are residents who love GPP. We have already employed the SSL solutions from the American Society of Civil Engineers and the US EPA. These are best-in-class solutions. We are like the residents in Auburn Hills who teamed with their city and they've realized the same excellent outcomes. A typical install, as you know, requires the homeowner to install a sump tank, a sump pump, check valve, electrical connection and a generator. The equipment installed in the basement versus outdoors reduce the impacts from freezing. This requires the floor slab to be cut and in some cases completely removed to install this equipment. In Auburn Hills and other Midwest communities, the discharge line is run from the residential sump pump to a storm drain at or near the road edge. While all this was reviewed in Gross Point Park in two thousand sixteen, Gross Point Park has yet to support residents with these necessary connections. With that, I raise these three questions. How do you plan to make these direct connections to the storm drain available to Gross Point Park residents? Two, are you prepared now to speak regarding the construction plans for the additional outfalls as described in this evening's presentation? And in the bid package, what alternatives are being investigated for lining? Tured-in-place is incredibly expensive right now. As good stewards, please be mindful of these purchase decisions. Thank you, Nick, Pat Thomas and all the teams for the support and commitment to this multifaceted solution. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Uh, next public comment, we have Ron Porter. Uh, Ron, if you could state your name and uh, city of residence and please go ahead.
Good evening, Ron Porter, seven eighty-one Pemberton. Um, and I have a couple of comments. First about the ordinance. Uh, I fully support uh, having uh, a requirement that uh, residents disconnect any remaining downspouts that are draining into the uh, sanitary sewer. It would affect me. I have one that is encased in a wall uh, that I'll have to uh, spend a fair amount of money to uh, uh, remedy, but I will do it and I will feel good about it if I see a real commitment by the city to make sure that every resident and every business uh, and every further development is also similarly committed to removing water uh, from the sanitary system and the storm system. I say this because the requirement was there in two thousand sixteen and the city did little to nothing to ensure that residents uh, complied with the requirement. So we need an entire group effort and we need to be mindful that future developments that are already planned will have a significant impact on our water uh, handling needs. The Art Center will convert a lot of green space, including a large area in front of the library into a parking lot, into an opportunity to further uh, flood our storm sewer system. And I think about uh, Ms. Clark in the thousand block of Lake Point. Her neighbor is about to be a large parking lot, which will just drain of what, an acre at least of uh, rainwater into the storm sewer, which already is completely overburdened. So we need to make sure that these developments that the city has approved and are moving forward with don't add to the problem that you're asking me to invest money in uh, to fix. My other comment is uh, we need to stop talking about five-year, ten-year, hundred-year events. Uh, I work in data analytics, so I love data, but the data that uh, these folks are talking about in terms of rainfalls and how often they occur, aren't good predictors of what's going to happen. So we need to talk about sizing our systems to handle something larger than happened on the twenty-sixth and not worry about how long uh, events like that used to happen. Um, they happen now, they happen every five years apparently. So uh, we need to start thinking about designing our system to function for a specific event uh, rather than looking at historical data. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next comment, we have Joe Gleason. Uh, Joe, if you could please state your name and city of residence and uh, please go ahead.
Hi, Joe Gleason in Gross Point Park. Uh, two things, the, the alert system that was mentioned sounds fantastic. Um, and I wanted to urge caution with that. Had people received their alerts and gone down to the basement in the middle of the night, um, drowsy and stepped into knee-deep water to try and rescue things, we could have had electrocutions of uh, individuals, which is something that as that system goes in, needs to be concerned. And Molly mentioned um, the water and Lake Point in her area. It's my understanding in April, at a public meeting, it was announced that certain areas of Gross Point were not properly separated or not connected, that storm water from the streets was still being funneled into the sewage lines. And specifically in the area by the Art Center, which would suggest according to the flood maps, those areas collected ten to twenty blocks worth of water and their only outlet was in a, the system designed for sewage water, not storm water. And up at the elevation that that was at, put catastrophic pressure on the system. So I guess the question is, we knew there was a problem, we offered to fix it back in April. It's still putting, and those homes ironically became the most damaged during this last event. And it seems there's no, nothing on the table as of yet, months later, to fix that. So when I hear everything tonight talking about, you know, downspouts, which is a small percentage, mathematically speaking, of our source of water. Um, if that's the urgency that we're moving forward with and we didn't enforce that going forward and it's still not the big problem, if this was a publicly traded company and I was listening to a turnaround plan, I would short the stock. I would say we're, we're looking at something that is not the crisis at hand. If we have street water being funneled into storm, into the sewage systems, that, that is multiple, multiple times greater than all of the downspouts combined. And so um, to hear what I heard tonight sounded like finger pointing and blatantly ignoring a liability that exists in the system and with no plan uh, immediately to address something. So those residents in those areas that we already know about should be immediately warned that their home will be repeatedly and continuously flooded with knowledge that that will happen. That's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, next comment, we have um, uh, Bill Schuster. Bill, if you could please state your name and city of residence and please go ahead.
Sure, this is Bill Schuster, thirteen hundred block of Bedford and Gross Point Park, pretty much at the intersection of Werner and Bedford. And uh, over the last three major events that we've received, you know, which had decreasing rainfall totals, my observations were the Patterson Park, which is the, where we, you know, is conveying most of our stormwater uh, flow, storm, our separate flow, it was pumping at very different efficiencies for these different events. And so there has to be some emphasis on the storm separate side of the system. Because this is clearly uh, you know, we have to manage this differently. Lot of good comments here. The, you know, the idea or concept of containment, uh, basically GLEWA is turning our public and private assets or property into, into their storage assets. And I, I think that that's um, that wasn't part of the contract, uh, as, as I see it. Uh, one quick comment on downspouts. Um, you know, this is a tool in the toolbox, but we do have to be worried about uh, return flow or wetting up the system instead of drying it out. And so I, I think the, you know, the ordinance, as it reads and the graphics are very good. Uh, but you know, again, it kinda goes into the, the discussion around green stormwater infrastructure. It'd be very careful where we put it and how it fits into the overall hydrologic setting in our landscape here in Gross Point Park. Among other areas in the east side, uh, we have very, we have a shallow water table that's more dynamic as we get closer to, to the coast, you know, to Lake St. Clair and to Detroit River. So um, I guess just a cautionary note on these things. Uh, I think that calling for consultation on these matters is very important. And you know, finally, you know, are we looking at deregionalization? Can we get the GLEWA system to function better? If we get our uh, Western Wayne County, Oakland and Macomb neighbors to, to basically regulate or throttle down their flows coming through. Thanks.
Uh, next public comment, we have Alice. Alice, if you could go ahead, please state your name and your city of residence and please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Alice Blackmore. I live at fourteen oh nine Harvard Road, Gross Point Park. I'm a relatively new resident to Gross Point Park. My husband and I have lived here for My husband and I have lived here for just under four years. We, like so many others, have experienced not one but two floods in the last month. I want, the reason I'm commenting tonight is not because I have a lot of technical expertise, but I'm an extremely concerned resident and I've heard a lot of talk about what we're going to do on the hard infrastructure, which I think is good. But one comment that stuck out to me earlier in the presentation was, you know, with regards to rain gardens, is, you know, I see beautiful plants that are, you know, natural to the area. Other people see weeds. That is a public education problem that this council and our city needs to tackle headfirst. Because I guarantee you, I guarantee you that if the choice is between three to four to five to six feet of water and sewage in our basements versus a comprehensive green infrastructure plan that includes quote-unquote weeds, I'm going to go ahead and say we've got 100% on the weeds. And I would just like to throw my voice towards also putting more energy into that process instead of the dismissive tone that I think I've heard here tonight. I really appreciate the time and energy that people have put in just trying to solve this problem. We all want to solve this problem. We all live here because we love this community. I don't want to have to leave. I know my neighbors don't want to have to leave. But it's going to take more than just focusing on hard infrastructure solutions, because the fact of the matter is that our climate is changing. We need to look to our neighbors in this country and outside of this country that have dealt with these issues effectively. Places that come to mind are Portland, Oregon, Madison, Wisconsin, Ann Arbor. In some cases, places in Europe are 30 years ahead of us. The resources are out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. So please take some time to consider those in your future plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment is Richard. Richard, if you could state your name and city of residence and please go ahead.
Hi, this is Richard Sandifer and I'm 647 Westchester. I started talking, unfortunately, had a couple of technical difficulties. So my original comment was about how all of the discussions that we have had up until now from the engineer basically describes ways to fix our system, none of which would have solved the June 26 problem. I've lived here for 32 years. I've been through several floods. I have never had a flood like we had on the 26th. The amount of water that we received was totally excessive. It shows our complete dependence upon the city of Detroit and the failures that city of Detroit are going to cause these problems again. Every one of the failures, every one of the floods that I had in the past were failures on the part of people. Gross Point Park back in 1997 didn't turn the pumps on, flooded my basement. Back in 2016, it was another failure. All of these failures have all been someone doing something that they weren't supposed to do. In this last one, the city of Detroit screwed up, didn't pump, we all flooded. There is nothing that is going to stop this from the future. We do not have the ability at this point to solve the problem. When this system was designed, I've been here for a long time. I've sat through all the meetings. When this system was designed, we had a bypass that allowed us to take care of ourselves. Because of a lawsuit from Lydell and Duvin or the residents of Ashland, they closed the Fox Creek bypass. The Fox Creek bypass protected the city of Gross Point Park for decades. It is still capable of protecting the city of Gross Point Park. There is no reason that we can't, in a very short term, be able to solve the problem and be able to protect the residents immediately. The problem is, it is uncomfortable to flood Fox Creek. The issue was, do we flood the backyards of Ashland or do we flood our basements? And we chose to flood our basements. I understand the reliability associated with it and I fully believe that if we flood Fox Creek, that we should compensate the people of Ashland to clean up their backyards if we cause a disturbance. But the bottom line is, if we don't do something immediately, this is just going to happen again. Thank you very much.
Mayor Denner, I have no more public comment.
Okay, thank you, Manager Seisland. And thank you, council and all of our residents who participated in the public comment. Good discussion, good meeting and we'll see you all again on on August 23rd at our regular council meeting. At this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Support.
Part.
Well, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, council and thank you, residents. Have a good evening.